It is six o'clock, December 3rd. All recovered from our tryptophan holiday. Motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Bill Gilmore seconded by Dan Gill. All those in favor?
Aye.
The Citrus Select Awards committed to writing an environment of respect for meetings. We ask everyone to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants with a marked life, an or ties, community to welcome and respected. And ask our community members and everyone in this day to commit to these standards and to support and respect our community. With that, are there any either virtual or live walk-ins? Do none? Report to the town administrator.
Good evening. Water treatment plan update we'll start with. Contractors continuing the excavation for the foundation of the building. Concrete rebauers subcontractor on site installing rebauer concrete framework and the installation of ground wires continuing. So water treatment plan is moving. We do expect to see the first concrete course in the next couple of weeks. Weather dependent, looks like it's gonna get warm, so go to the next phase of the project. We'll actually start around the building, which will be in here. The Board of Health of the school, Public Advisory, there's been an increase in the number of pertussis, whooping cough, and mycoplasma pneumonia. Walking or atypical pneumonia infections throughout the state. Please be aware of the signs and symptoms of these illnesses. Go to the Board of Health website on the town webpage for information. It's very important for all the parents out there. The Recreation Department went to registration, opened this Wednesday, tomorrow, December 4th, then 5:15. Please don't miss it. A lot of those programs fill up very quickly. Social Vocational Technical High School Building Project is gonna be an online public forum on December 7th at 7:00 PM. The link will be available on their webpage next week. Also next week, Citrus TV will be interviewing, airing an interview superintendent Tom Hickey regarding the building project updates. A reminder that the district-wide vote is on Saturday, January 25th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM in the high school gym. Got any questions? You can go to the social tech website or contact the superintendent Tom Hickey, 71-766-40012. Driftway Park, there's maintenance on the trails at Driftway Park beginning tomorrow. It'll last a couple of weeks, weather permitting. Work will be on the green trail. Lots of the trail will be closed while work is occurring. Project involves redefining the width of the trail, cutting back vegetation, growing into the path of benches, adding some material to level off trail. Map can be found on the Citrus Town website under Conservation. If you missed the recent food clinics, the Board of Health is hosting additional food clinics every Friday from 9:00 to 11:00 in the Board of Health office. Registration is required. It can be done by going to the Board of Health webpage. Another reminder, people in the town who viewed the Community Choice Electric Program for another three years, that's starting this month. People should have gotten a notice in the mail. The good news is that the rates are low this year than they were in the last plan, so that is good. No action is necessary if you enroll, because you automatically redue in the plan that you are in. Food pantry continues to see an increase in clients, especially during the holiday season. There was a new list of preferred and needed items. Chopped spaghetti sauce, hot chocolate, B cap, brown and instant coffee, microwave popcorn, canned white beans, Gable mushroom soup, Gable chicken soup, vegetable soup, spam, and artificial sweetener. This can be dropped off the pantry during operating hours on the bins behind the old gates. Different library, village market, shawls, also flatbacks pantry. Finally, congratulations to the Citrus Sales. They'll be playing in the Super Bowl this Thursday at 3:00 PM at Gillette Stadium. So good luck to them. Myself and the Duxbury Town Manager, Rainey Reed, I placed a small wager on the game, and the loser will be making a donation to the other community's food pantry for the holiday season. So whoever wins, the food pantry will win, but good luck for the sales. And we hope they do well on Thursday. That's right, half time.
I was afraid you'd have to run that Thursday or something.
Not now.
Well, having to extend that to their chair, their select board chair on a similar wager, if they got that time. Any questions for our town administrator? Nope, see none, alright. So we are going to... Oh, walk, yeah. Anyone else for walk-ins or anything, or? No? Um, let's see. Any stuff, like? Let's talk about wildflowers.
Yes.
Come on. How are you?
I'm very good, and all of you. Well, well, I hope. At our last meeting, we thought that the other tempers offer a donation from Mr. Steve Jordan to put pile fill of my wildflowers for the meadow. And we would like you to give your okay to accept it. And that's basically it. I'm very excited because we turned that grass area into a meadow. And now if I throw out seeds, we'll get more bees made of trees, mind you, and butterflies in the little critters. So I'm very, very excited.
I love it. Yeah, so if you folks haven't been, I mean, obviously we'll appreciate more the wildflower aspect more in the spring, summer, but it is the perfect spot. That's exactly where it can come in, seeming in your park, you're right behind, beautiful area, right? All the pollinators, maybe there is. When that's done, this is fabulous that...
The vendors with the whole unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna be next prime of summer, it's gonna be absolutely spectacular.
Questions, comments, any?
I just, I wanted to commend Kenny in particular of her vision for this property and Stephen and Steve for his generosity. So happy to make the call.
Yes.
I would move to accept the very generous $500 donation from JSB Investments to use for purchase of wildflower seeds for the mine property.
Second, Mr. Gilmore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, fabulous, cannot wait to enjoy. See you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gavino. And yes, people, I'm enjoying your texts. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Gavino. How are you?
Great, how are you? All those guys for making my original comments.
No, no, that's this.
Thanks for your comments.
What do I understand? Let's go to 141. Yeah, so I mean, a part of this, you go, it's thought it was a numbers game, sometimes it is a numbers game, but what are your challenges? Things you've learned? I think you obviously know the girl, but she's gotta tell us. Tell us the story for this year.
Sure, absolutely. I always like to start over the accomplishments. Hopefully, there'll be some next year as well, or the year after. So this year, we had, just prior to the beginning of this fiscal year, we had an issue, a new RFP for our new five-year contract with our vendors. Whether or not it's gonna maintain, you know, you're gonna maintain current vendor, remain to be seen, but thankfully, our existing vendor won the RFP and was awarded this $71,000 contract. And that's a five-year contract, four updates, you know, working together, our office, myself, and PK and associates, and a rebuild. In fiscal '19, the town created $72,000 for one revaluation. So we've come a long way, bringing a lot of things in the house and cleaning a lot of things up. And the way we're doing that is with a lot of inspections. We inspected over 1,500 properties, like 1,200 were full measurement list. Will be measured the property independently, enter inside if that's possible. So if not, we'll do the best we can on the outside, but...
Did you say outside 400? And volume inspection?
Uh, 12, uh, 1200. Seven by PK and 500 by AST. So we still have 2,000 more to go. So that, I'll get back to the accomplishments, but... So that was a great accomplishment for us to get those inspections done, get our feet down. We also really cruised as far as updating the values, getting the values approved by the U.R. quickly. We had a very early classification hearing, it was a select board back in October, which was really quick. And then we just waited, we waited for the special time meeting, and Nancy was great. The recap was all ready to go, and we were able to submit it the day after special time meeting. But the tax rate was only 20%. So we're still, we're still really on schedule, not bad schedule. Outreach, we talked about this during the classification work, you know, still a huge priority. We had workshops last year. We have a workshop at 10:00 AM next Tuesday at the senior center. That's the first of three. So everybody's invited, and even people who have received exemptions in the past, the numbers have changed. They may qualify for, you know, more than a 12th exemption. And this is, this is ongoing, and the Board of Assessors continue to monitor local options for tax relief. For this year, the HERO Act was passed, and so there's two parts of the HERO Act. One, it's not a local option, it involves multi-vehicle excise. An veteran with 100% service connected disability no longer pays excise. And believe it or not, even though that law was passed well into, you know, last fiscal year or the beginning of this fiscal year, we were able to go retroactive to that big excise commitment they sent out last February. So we sent out application forms and letters to the 40 that we're aware of that received $1,000 exemption for being 100% disabled. The people we don't know, who may have 100% disability, are those veterans that don't own homes. So if anybody listening to my voice, if you know of anybody with 100% dis- service connected disability, or if their VA letter says they're unemployable, usually it's one of the same, but sometimes it's not, they, we can abate their excise, we need to get their money back that they paid in February, and then next year they'll be in our system and they won't get a bill again. But we want them to choose their card. I take Pinto, you know, I'm just kidding. So we do, that's why we send out the applications on there. So they pick the card that they want to accept. It's only one card per veteran per household. So the other part of the HERO Act is doubling the awards. And that's something the Board of Assessors want to put on the annual town meeting or coming through. And that, we doubled the awards for seniors a few years ago, and now we'd like to do that. It's an $80,000 cost to the overlay. We probably have $40,000 available in the overlay, so it would be something that would need to be discussed with the select board, Jim and Nancy and the advisory board. But just, just, you know, we are looking for these things. Find a town meeting, adopt a, a local option where we can exempt personal property valued at $5,000. All those tiny nickel-and-dime bills, so we got rid of 900 personal property bills. And that worked out really well. So going forward, lots of inspections. We need to complete 2,000 inspections in the next little less than two years, which is a little scary, but really, if you break it down, 500 in-house, 500 PK, it's very durable. So I'm comfortable with that. Cyber awareness, we, you know, way back when Mike came on board and cybersecurity, you know, became training and all of that, we made sure that all of our data, it's God forbid we lost all the assessment data, it would be millions if you could strike that. It's held off-site in three different states. So we're pretty, I mean, they have it in the three states and a location, but, and it's also held off-site at PK's corporate headquarters. So we have four different offset locations for our data, but there's other things we're gonna do as part of God forbid, we'll be able to still operate as normal as possible. And as far as the budget goes itself, the increase was in salaries and contractual obligations. Our expenses actually down a few hundred dollars.
Good job.
Thank you.
And I do wanna thank my staff and my board, and Nancy and Jim, and Pam. It's a pleasure to work here, and this flight we got is recommended by the town administrator. It perfect, we'll be able to follow a lot of goals and people's employee.
I like Gary's verbiage. I will look around the question, but I'd have to say this. I would say the two of you would agree, nine times out of 10, if we get a phone call from a constituent, it's usually someone's not calling to say, hey, some of these people aren't doing well. I will say, on multiple times, I actually have had folks say about the assessors office, about the folks doing the inspections, how is the nicest person you could, like, the efficiency in the office, the kindness in the outreach? I can't tell you how many different times, oh, I went to that meeting, whatever, the fact that, please keep doing it. It's, it's noticed, when we notice it, it's amazing. And again, yeah, it's not always you get to say, hey, the improvement, the efficiency in this, it's eager to see. Look at how many inspections, what other consultant, they're fabulous, everyone there is fabulous, so not... But I just had to say it because it's not, you don't, you don't always get to say that when someone calls.
It's nice to hear. We don't, we don't wanna get positive feedback, but that's alright, we're not here to be...
No, I mean, it's because you're helping, you're legitimately helping people, and it's, it's really, no, it's just, thank you. Having that, having that mindset, not to be...
We have a good team, and, I mean, it's a team effort all around, and I'll make sure I spread that nice that to the board assessors. I'm sure the only, well, you might get a complaint that I just talked too damn much. You know, they can't get the help to do it. Besides that.
Yeah. Questions?
Yes, the flip of that is everyone, no one's ever happy when they're assessing themselves. We do hear those calls too. So my question, the only question I have is, so you have, how many workings in Dallas happens with a vendor? Are you comfortable that, that you're on par, that you're comfortable with the answer?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Before the vendor came in this year to do Ammarak in the Cliffs, that was the area, and they didn't inspect the properties that had been inspected since 2000. I had done those, so trying to save a little money. We need to get a lot down in a short amount of time. We had a meeting, we went over every, more scenarios than I could think, but they brought up scenarios. I mean, what do you call a wood deck over a wood deck? And that, that's what they call it. And they say, that's not a wood deck over a porch. And like, not unless it's in purpose, it's in purpose. But if it's just wooden slats, that's not a porch down below, you better get wet in the rain. So we just got on the same page, and we, and I had worked with the main inspector, Nancy, in the past. She's done some small, you know, couple dozen or couple hundred, a little bit inspection for me. So I, another thing, obviously, every company has their levels of competency, and they sent me their best inspector, which was great. But we did spend a lot of time, that was so important.
Defining everything.
And that's why we also upgraded the position in the office to assessing specialists, so you have another person seeing, you know, we go out together, you know, half the time, and Andy's seeing the same thing that I'm seeing, so we're on the same page. Now, we can debate that, is there a judgment clause, condition, quality of construction? Square foot is just pretty much not a judgment clause, you know, condition and quality. So you want to be on the same page, who the vendor, every least of, we, we...
Yeah, and we want that for the community, so, not two separate roles.
Yeah, but anyway, you wanna be consistent and fair, I mean, my word.
And the other thing I would add is, can I make sure, I'm sorry, this is review actually, is that the workshop, we get the dates of the workshops and put them on the town calendar, so that if somebody loves them, they can see that they're there. That would be great.
Excellent. Actually, I talked with a resident about having, just what you were talking about, that there's a vendor, and actually they like knowing that there's different eyes, knowing that there's people to look at, if it's not just one, there's the ability to kind of, because right, some of these are judgment calls, but there was...
Any major changes I went out on?
Yeah, alright.
Either way, up or down, but just, you know, the debt is not horrible, but it doesn't need updating. You know, things change over a decade, a period, and spend close to 50, 20 years, something's almost inspected. Some people say they've been in the house 50 years and then started assessing. Doesn't mean they weren't there, might have just had exterior inspection.
I mean, yeah, the numbers, I mean, the improvement, it's just salary. So, yeah, it's flat. Fifty, we got $50 out of the...
Yeah, I think if the 50 I requested to put, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have another question, sorry. You were, you were conflicting with the Hatherley Holiday Consters.
I apologize. Thank you very much. Everybody else?
Right, so next we have Cyrus. Cyrus, yes, Department of Housing and Transit. We will get to the user study.
Yeah, I'm going.
So we have most of our community here this evening, so we have, I think we have a call meeting to...
Oh, okay, we get a Forum Lay.
Right, so I'd like to call our meeting to a order. And a motion to...
Yes.
Alls in favor? So thank you for having us in. We wanted to hand deliver our notes back to you all regarding the Gates Reuse Study. So we do appreciate that you asked us to take a look at the proposals that were submitted by the consultants and that we were able to weigh in. So we did, we did, some actually attended the presentation in person, the initial with the consultants, and then all of us watched it prior to our meeting, and then the consultants came by advising and attended our meeting, went through the whole presentation again in an abbreviated fashion, because we were already two months in. So our recommendation is sort of a modified, tear down the building and construct a new one, which is option three to get proposed. So we're very much good with that product. That option. So our feeling was that the option three with two buildings was just too overwhelming for the space. Maybe adding another building, taking away John's Court, they have parking issues. You have two giant buildings, you have butters, there's neighborhoods behind those fields. But the option three with the new building gives whoever builds, builds the building, more options. They're not constrained with that existing Gates building as far as what they can configure for housing options. If you reuse and renovate the existing building, you're sort of constrained as to what they can do when they ran through those options in those presentations.
So I guess generally, I mean, what are your thoughts? It's kind of writ large for the size of the property, the units that you saw, I know option three, it's something like 66 units, I believe. All of you have been involved in this for a while, as a site itself, parking, other activities around it. What are your general thoughts on, is this an appropriate site, you think? Is this gonna be? I mean, we have to look at the whole picture here, and this thing has been talked about for a decade, essentially, and it's moving it fast with the lasses. And there's a lot of new parts. So I'd love to kind of like, what are, you know, what are we really thinking here, I guess?
It seems like it's a great set.
Okay.
The town owns it. There's plenty of room to build a sizable building. Obviously, we're a little bit more slanted towards rental units. The consultants suggested that, you know, constrain that RFP when it does go out. The condos is an option. We need to ask if a mixed use, or mixed between affordable housing and market rate housing would be attractive for people to buy, because it'd be expensive, that market rate, and they didn't think there would be an issue based on where it's located in town. The consultants love the property, so they think, they think it's a great set. We do think that it should be not constrained to seniors, the open tier, to all, and a mix of one and two, three bedrooms.
Alright, let me, let me open it up, there are some more questions, but I wanted to...
In your, in the draft notes originally, that you had said that you thought, that your committee had thought, all units would be controlled, subsidized housing, that's still within your recommendation?
Yes.
So in that scan of somebody?
If they're, if it's rent, if it's a rental property, they...
Right, if it goes rental, that would be a nice, that usually doesn't happen. We would get 25, I don't, approximately 25. I appreciate your diligence, but I sat in a meeting when I brought this letter for a room, sweet, romantic conversation.
So it's just the one building, it's probably about half the units, it would be a little bit more than half, or is that proposal of 66? I'm gonna guess it's probably, it'd be similar in size to the Lawson Breeding Product, Project, which is 30 units. Okay, similar in size, would think, I don't know the square foot and age. That's 100% affordable, so I don't know if that's possible. It might be, you know, by a company like the Grantland Group, there's other companies that do the all portable. If they can pull it off, if that's better financing than they, if they did, right, raise, hopefully it would be more attractive, so we'll see.
So move off topic, but indulge me because it's relevant for the affordable housing topic. So we have two of these two sites that are designated for affordable housing in the town. What have been the attendments forgetting? We know we need it, we know that, and it's identified as matching the goal. Those two sites have not, I'm not seeing a containment on that. They're clean sites, they're building type, they're down. What would be, like, why, why aren't, like, should you be... What would be, like, why, why aren't we, like, should you be assuming those? Which places, so the one down, Plastique Mary on the Driftway, there's a site.
Right.
And then there's the High and Low Bridge. Those are the two that I'm aware of.
Right, so the, the Driftway site, I believe, is still owned by the Housing Authority?
Oh, okay.
I think the town does own property behind Lawson Breeding.
Yep.
So that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, so overarching goal, increase on affordable. This particular project is, we have a building that costs is, you know, close to two hundred grand a year, I think. What are you gonna swear? Hundred fifty plus capital cost.
Yeah, it's a hundred, how long?
Uh-huh.
Right. How long has it been vacant?
So there has been, I, I get your point about not restricting to seniors, that is, that sort of, you know, makes sense for that campus area. But we have larger need than that, for sure. So I think that's great, you know, to Mr. Gilmore's point, that it's rental, they're not all affordable, the whole numbers get to pass. For sale, look at, it's only those.
Just that percentage.
And the other factors, the other factor in this here, we don't use that site for any, any purpose other than parking. When we move the building, keep the A wing. But it's still gonna cost three or four million dollars to move that building. Based, you know, guessing what the plastic. None of those are particularly desirable trees here, but it just kills me to have that building sitting there. Costing money and not being, I mean, it's, it being of use but not applied at first. And what, we appreciate you doing this and making sure that I'm reaching this piece of the puzzle, for sure.
Appreciate being able to take a look at it. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, I guess, I wanted to remind me on the cost, what would be the cost of a modified option three?
They gave us actually a lot of.
I thought they did in our original.
It's, yes, um, per unit, whatever, but I don't know if these are all the documents that they were previously.
It's, it's the developers' cost, not the town's cost.
Right, right, that's, it's offset, so the town, town costs are offset, that was the whole point of, sorry.
Yeah.
That was the whole point of going out there and saying, could we hardly reduce the cost of the town for Biden asset? So I don't know if they did or if they doubt.
They gave what they, the estimates for the developers' cost, which would probably be the most attractive to the developer.
Yeah.
And we would be donating the land and all that.
Right. And then the. The, they also recommended not senior housing, but there were better grants up there for, for multi-generational housing. And then I guess timeline and cost were, are having, wanting to understand where we would be in that. With, if we, that, because your recommendations to do it aren't, right?
When you're, when the town's ready to do it.
Yeah, and their, and their recommendation eliminates the other bill, the other options, which I was never really keen on, which was to build bigger buildings around.
Yeah.
You know, it's just not important at this stage. Thank you for bringing me.
Yeah, so I guess going back to the, to the financing, I know we don't have the numbers here, but all of you have been involved with more, Nancy here. Help us understand, what are some real scenarios, what we think might happen, or that might be hopeful? Because here's where I sit. The town, we're financially, it's gonna be hard, but we can help. What sort of partnerships really can we expect in this sort of environment with higher interest rates? Like, what would be the best case scenario that we think for the town that wouldn't cost us as much? I get you, you know what I'm saying, like, what, what is it we can provide but not kill us if they're, hey, this is gonna cost twenty, thirty, forty, or ten million, two million, three, like even, where could we go there?
Right.
And hoping on grants, hoping on others, like, what do we really think? Or other comments, I guess.
I mean, if you go back and look at that presentation, market rate condos was the lowest, lowest cost of ones, that was the best bang for the dollars. That's, the more you wish to have affordable, the more the town has to kick in to offset the cost of developing those units. So if you want them all affordable, it's gonna cost a lot more, I think that's a sound for.
So others, so other towns that have done this, they have, let's just say, ten affordable. And we're looking at about thirty. I mean, they gave, we can count in a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand units.
I think it was, I think C P C put in a million nine, C P A put in a million nine, bought affordable housing, just put in six hundred thousand.
That was.
The town, other than the C P A funds, the town, like, there's nothing on the tax, that, like, that part, there wasn't a capital project for it. It was funded for affordable housing funds through the, those two areas.
That's thirty some odd units, but those were the ones. The town is not affordable, so, so that, eight, nine. Yeah, if you want to see. You did it that way. As opposed to a Lawson Breeding, which is a hundred percent affordable. And then, the fact that another customer taken down the building, which would be a cost of, I just chuck a mark. So then I think that total project cost would be maybe around ten million, what say? Developer, to tax credit finance. You see this behind me, because you know the cost, the town is gonna be tough, and, you know, trying to make the right balance, and then we can do, and what we can't do, and what's responsible, not responsible. But. Sorry, there's a, it doesn't, it's not, you know, I don't think it's as easy, there could be, because the financing is very.
Well, so the balances, what we did, the town, which is a facilities master, what was it called? Looked at everything, originally that site was, was recommended to be calm, all of that. But because of time and costs, I don't think anybody on this board is gonna go to the town and say, hey, we need thirty, forty million dollars to retrofit this building, so it can get a good office. It's just, sorry.
It'd be really nice.
It would be really nice.
I'd pick that up.
And, and, you know.
I agree, I think the only thing about ours was.
Exactly, but I'm saying from a, from a cost aside, best use, I mean, municipal use would be fabulous there. They, you know, it would fit with campus, we do all that. We are in a situation now where that's just not something that any of us have a system to, we wouldn't have, and we wouldn't want our amended place, everybody's just gonna money. Sorry. So then it's like, okay, what's next? And we know on master plan, affordable housing is really high on the list. So, you know, do we square this situation with, with, okay, we, if we're not gonna be able to afford the highest in this use on the site, what's the second? And does it mean I'm using, can't be afforded, and you guys moved just closer to making that decision? But then, you know, with the next step would be our, the, with parameters, right?
Yeah, with the parameters that they're about.
And see how it shakes out.
See what we get back.
I would personally, we'd go for, although the developers would be much more attracted to a condo situation, because they can catch out, maybe they're not moving away. I think the town would be better served, I'll, personally. But I don't, we all know that we don't need numbers or anything, it's beautiful.
A couple of points of value would have been, and I think they're probably consistent with your opinion. Because it's, you're not going to ostensibly change the footprint, that doesn't mean you're gonna have easier parking or anything, but you're not gonna make it worse than it is, it would be if you had different concept. The other aspect of the affordable rental property is that's cyclical and changing all the time, which really does help out people that need places like that. It's not like you're buying a condo and you're gonna have it in your family or yourself, or until you sell it and move somewhere else, or whatever. It really is a function that helps people in the town. And I think it's quite an honorable thing, and it's streamlined. So, there are companies operating that are interested in this kind of work. This kind of, so.
It becomes a balance, how much does the town have to contribute to make it work?
How much do you want?
And can we afford it?
I guess another thing I should say, this is also for folks to start to digest at home. It was good. Last four or five years, everyone that's come forward, there's one consistent message from wherever, any consultant for other issues, no one has told me the best use is to rent it, yeah, I haven't heard.
Yeah. Not a one.
So people, I think we need to start realizing that no matter what we're doing, that the conversation is real, but that building you might be torn back. We're going for this, or some other route, or whatever, and just people need to start knowing that now. And because I want to be a big surprise for us, even for this, again, it was the same thing that this evening. I want to be a surprise, that we are seriously talking about at some point taking that down. We got this. In half a decade, no one's told us, of course, same here, that the best option, tear it down and rebuild it.
So the, they do, thank you for pointing out that. Oh, this is from, this jar just.
Well, there's some mellow in our back.
Yeah, sorry.
I just thought, it wasn't around our back.
Yeah, so this jar points out that we'll have to go through that, if we were to go that route, do we go through the process, which? Do we go through the process?
Big floor mass. Yes.
Yes, worst case scenario, they name, and it's a twelve month wait period. It's great.
Well, then, well, thank you so much, I'm sorry, any other questions?
I just have one other question, when you had your meeting here to discuss this, did people show up and did you get any color? Many people, okay.
We, we had one resident, so I do the minutes for the floor process, so it was one resident and Amber Vine was there at the twenty-four days.
That's, that's a good point, any questions, audience? This is great, thank you.
You do.
I really appreciate it, good, this is, thank you. A lot of the, it's really good work.
Yes, yeah, we'll work on our team.
Your turn.
We'll bring it back to the board.
Wait, listen, why do you return?
Sorry. Sorry.
Not promotion to return, affordable housing, just be.
Before, before any decision, look back, we'll have to, if you don't get it. Probably, it'll be, down thirty-five, twenty minutes.
Hard Master, come on up. How is everybody this evening?
Well, how are you?
Good. Right, thank you for taking the time to meet with me tonight. Um, I'm here to talk to you about awarding the contract for the feasibility study to the Hard Master's office, Olson, he was bus architects. Interested by the C S. Note, last March, we received a grant for a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars from Seaport Economic Council. And then we have our match from the Waterways and the Credit Fund, twenty percent of that. And we put out an R P back in August, we got about forty-eight requests for the R P. We, I believe, received seven response for the R P. We put together a group consisting of myself, Corey Miles, the coastal resource officer, Tom McCarthy, engineering department, All Scott, doing a lot of projects, he used to work with towns, town engineer. And Rick Murray, from the Waterways. We read through the R Ps and graded them, and we worked with two very qualified candidates. One was, both of them was, the other one was. Kavis from Yarnet.
Okay, yeah.
We interviewed both companies here. And we came to the conclusion that Olson and Lewis was doing a great job. They worked on Boston Hard Master Office and the Hard Master Office, they did a great job. I actually contacted both Hard Master departments, see what they thought of that. And they were great to work with, and they feel they did a fantastic job. So they were selected. They were asked to put in a, to negotiate with us. So they sent in the request, and that's why we're here to discuss and hopefully approve this evening. That was for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Alright, all of these, again, I may have to joke, I want to go into the feasibility study business.
Yes.
It's fabulous. But this would be, I think, kind of, we actually get this pretty soon, right, it'll be May, or June, July.
Yeah, we'd be done with this. Yeah, we're gonna be done, what do you mean, this year?
That's good, alright, let me, it's a very well-respected architectural company, it wasn't kind of, flight down. The cradle is just these numbers. Online. Anyone? Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I have a few.
Okay.
So in the, in the proposal, like, what is the, what is the footprint that they're gonna be looking?
They're gonna be looking at both the Hard Master building itself and the Coast Guard.
Incorporate that.
Incorporate them together. And what we're envisioning is having one building with a wall around the center that would separate the Coast Guard building and the High and West building.
We're not displacing that, was it clear?
We're, we're not displacing, we're, we're looking to enhance, enhance that facility to make it more desirable for them to stay. And also bring them into a fever, but playing elevations.
I was gonna say, we'll have to elevate the building.
Also, their building is not thickly, it's, yeah. Yeah, a nice new building, and then, you know, noble ranch, extra lift, it's going down. We just thought it was the best.
We remember the captain before, this staff that talked about it. They, they wanna be here, they wanna stay here, so they are excited that we're gonna do this, and they will be having discussions with us when we begin to design on as to what their need would be to make sure that it's useful for them.
We'll be on that hill.
They built the buildings, they're building our land, but they're like, no, you wanna build a new building, we're happy to work with you, come up this ways, because they really wanna stay here.
So they're gonna incorporate some sort of resiliency in this.
Yes, yeah, that's a big part of this.
It'll be elevated.
So it's gonna be elevated, I think our building has to go, it's seven hundred feet deep.
Yeah.
And then, when that's done, when the Coast Guard's built, it could be seen five feet or, you know, but Hard Master structure, the Coast Guard itself, under building, that would not spread any buildings. Pattern, to that's the site.
But there's no element of improving resiliency in that area, not because we dealt with the parkway that, if you're not gonna.
We'll still have a mo.
Yes, you will. Do we have any sense of, it's great that this is, I mean, that this is a lot of money from the Seaport.
Yes.
Economic Council. Do they have construction funds available?
We were very concerned. Uh, we were very concerned with grant funding.
Yeah.
And they've, um, they've come up with some additional grant applications that they're, uh, will be going to with Marshfield uh, next week and hopefully we'll get awarded more software than right.
They have funds available, there was funds in the, in the bill, they just didn't.
Are they gonna give us some money? I mean, Marshfield, then we'll do an EBITDA. Are they really gonna give us some money?
On the dredging?
Yeah.
Marshfield's up next week.
They're, they're meeting next week.
Right, but I.
They voted down.
If they voted down, we will not be dredging without forever, just so people are aware.
So what I'm asking, those construction, so we go through the design, we give eighty percent of this amount on the design, so that applies.
It is eligible for the construction cost.
It's eligible, we don't have to get it, but.
We have to apply.
What we have to think about is down the road, it's like, okay, it's usually, it's ten to twenty percent of the construction cost, it's a million and a half to a there's, there's a, you know, projection of this cost, it's a building. We're, you could tear down it.
See enterprise fund, so, um, based on all our fees and everything we collect, there would be no town taxpayer funds used.
Then my last question is, is really, they picked on the contract in their design. The landscape architect is nineteen thousand dollars for the landscape design. This is gonna be an elevated building in a flex. I just think that that's a crazy number.
It's a budget number, I don't think.
There is no way you need nineteen thousand dollars of landscape architect on this contract.
I think, I think a lot of it's got to do with, with the green, um, they were talking about using some stone and coming up, um, like granite and to raise it up around.
That's part of resiliency or?
Yeah, that's, that's part of resiliency. The overall appearance of the building and completely.
Okay, all right, is that number two?
Thank you, that's great, thank you for bringing out a thing at all. Yeah, for the funding before, it means it's gonna be enterprise fund, I mean, we're gonna have to talk about different rates because it's gonna be possible.
Yeah.
Have to budge. Uh, that's great. Well, thank you. Uh, can I get a, no further questions or motion?
Move that the select will reward the contract for architectural services for a feasibility study and schematic design for a Harvard method building to Olson Lewis and Architects for one hundred and thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Mr. Gilmore, say it again. Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
And us.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Awesome.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Yes, smuggered, to winterland.
You're gonna skip DJ.
Waited eight years for that.
Aye. This might be, you know, for my, I was like, let's get maybe, nice. This is a great day.
Yeah.
But let's talk about it. And, um, yeah, let's, I'm very excited, so thank you. Ellis, uh, North City.
Oh, I thought it was a great day with demolitions.
Contract. Yes, I love that too.
No, we don't like that guy.
That's, that's right.
So, uh, like we told the board before, um, on direction of the board, we went out with RFPs and put it out to a bunch of engineering firms. Um, you know, we did a full process of evaluation, got the circles back, uh, students sat on the committee also. And we went through, we rated everybody and we evaluated costs afterwards, we opened them up. And we found the most beneficial, cost-effective, um, engineering firm was Woodward and Karen. And, um, we were interested in awarding a contract to Woodward and Karen, bought the design permitting of North City, so.
Lot of. Do I have a motion? No. Questions, comments?
For the record, how is this being paid for?
This is a bar, we've capitalized two point two million for this, I don't know, it's a bar. And then eventually we're on the rates minus whatever.
Again, need to bring this before the town.
Are you voting? You voted two, two million, do you have this? Yeah.
Where are we with the design study of the wastewater creek? When is that coming on?
The, uh, facility study?
Yes.
Welcome, Zach, to be here.
Yeah, I've got a conference called the team tomorrow, uh, and we should have presentations in the spring. Uh, but it'll be ongoing as we anticipate to get some recommendations to carry out the plant.
But when you say ongoing, studies don't ongoing forever. When do you think that would be finalized?
The study portion will probably be finalized the summer twenty five. And I will have to dig into what they recommend for improvements at the plant, but it'll probably take us, uh, one to three years to carry out the recommendations.
This is the board, Corey, Corey had done a, a one stop application for the state, goes through all the different grant programs, uh, to get some money for this. Uh, we were not awarded, there were twenty one million dollars in funding, there were over two hundred and twenty million dollars when we requested projects. Uh, but, uh, they were very enthusiastic about our application, they thought it was very good. They made a couple suggestions that we will put in. There's also a new MTA catalyst fund, which we can apply for once we get our designation. So this meets all their criteria for grant funding, environmental housing, create compliance, business development, everything except being multi-community. Just too bad, but, uh, we, we do think that we'll be eligible for and will be, I think we'll get some good money to help out with this as we go forward. Maybe not this portion, but as we go forward.
Years, if there's any members of, uh, the media out there that wanna know that, again, helps the environment, good for housing, good for small businesses, and for ten years, state still, I'd make, my own personal opinion, I believe, we can bring, help us enough financially to get this done. Which benefit everyone in town, never mind, it's, I think it's very sad, but. More questions?
I just wanna commend you guys on the excellent RFP process and going through this and like, just getting us to, thank you for all that work. Um, I know that there are folks who are gonna wanna know on a timeline. Presuming we have any, uh, capacity, if we're working, you know, parallel tracks to make sure it's there, is that this could be completed by, uh, December of twenty twenty seven, you know, Harvey must knew that. And remind me, I don't know if you guys know the answer, I keep forgetting the number for the current proposed area that will service. The build out number, what, what's the gallon per day that will be required?
About a hundred and a quarter, well, you think? The full build up, about a hundred and a quarter.
Full build up, okay, I keep forgetting.
And the biggest thing I will face is, is getting permits because we have to show we have the capacity to that.
Right.
Bringing that down, I think right now we're ninety two.
Yeah, we're a little over nine percent.
We're about ninety two percent, so we, we have to get it now forever.
How much, I guess, is that? Did you say eighty?
Ninety.
Ninety, you got ninety now, but.
Remember, the water treatment plant is projected to free up thirty, forty thousand gallons of dam that we're putting into the system right now.
Right.
Just by itself, so, uh, and then Egypt Beach was ten plus, just by itself, that one replaced it, so, you know, we're halfway there.
Right, well, that's, that's the, that's the bet we made, was to chase both of those at the same time. And, you know, I know you guys are gonna get that, because, yeah.
That was a big discussion with water treatment, like, why do we leave it down where it was? Because we couldn't build a zero discharge plant that we needed to build. Not just for the water system, but for the sewer system also. Stuff that we said in the well is, you know, not great, he doesn't want it anywhere. We can take that out, take care of it, then we pick up a large chunk of what we need, uh, to do the most.
Yeah, and the timeline, I did sit on the committee, the timeline, like you mentioned, is through twenty twenty seven, so full implementation of this.
Assuming there's.
Assuming capacity and, um, a lot, a lot of the respondents, and we asked a lot of questions, I asked a lot of questions on the timeline and on grants and, um, we selected, uh, bidder had the best answers on the grants, so I was very confident.
Okay.
It would be, uh, able to get some grants.
So just, uh, for the people, oh, twenty twenty seven, is that full design or designed build up?
That is construction, so your operation startup has failed, you're out through twenty twenty seven, so it's November, December.
I think what you'll see is once we start digging, people actually see digging, that the soil is coming, uh, then people will stop, those business owners, it's probably gonna stop filing applications. With the plan, to catch, we already have the building going in across Cersei's, uh, not Cersei's, across the God Close. It's going in.
Yes.
We have a proposal that's gonna be before us at some point, like temporary at Jamie's, uh, that they wanted that, when the soil comes, they'll build up, I know Marley Brothers has something clear. Literally on this, so, I think, once we start, once people see it's real, it's not saying it's not in the space. We just started, we'll get a building, so.
Seven hundred and fifty days.
Oh, did you just have to write that?
So put up a block.
Down block in North City.
No pressure, well.
No, no.
No pressure, guys, no pressure, no pressure.
You know, we'll give it everything we have and, and, you know, the, the thing that can slow us down the most is just time, permitting and everything else, how long the state needs to stay. Overall, we feel pretty good about the project, we feel good about our selection and, um, I'm gonna make it happen. This is our free agency, so. It's got moments.
Super huge. We're doing.
We are gonna do it.
Motion. Yes, please.
Rules just left board and awarding engineering design, plumbing and construction services contract for sewer expansion from North Pidgin Village District. Woodward and Karen for a sum not to exceed one million five hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
Move, but, uh, Ms. Campbell, say it again, Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Conlon was here because I know for a fact she would be a hundred percent, I'll put that in, because I know she. Please put that in the minutes, I know she's a yes. So thank you. Balance stock. Construction, don't, not that long, disposal, I have a question, I'm sorry.
Sandy, our contract had run out with the prior contractor and, uh, we went up to bid, we had two bidders. Uh, the low bidder was a situat enterprise, it's an eight minute one forty nine, and the second bidder was a one fifty.
I don't know what this.
Right there. Hey, everyone, forty. Okay, I'm one forty now, so now we're gonna go up, I go one forty nine.
I just have one question. Why is the estimated contract amount different than the annual estimate in my proposal? Is it more than a year?
No, that, that tonnage number was really for bidding purposes and trying to provide the vendor some idea of, is, is tricks.
You wanna add only ten percent just in case.
Okay, so you just add ten percent.
So we're not.
It's whatever the unit price is we use.
Yeah, I know the unit price was obviously lowest, but, um, I was curious about that, okay.
We used to leave those open, so whoever filed, Nancy, Nancy likes to sign and announce.
She's funny now, I thought.
Right, that was my one question.
Yeah, no, no, I think so.
Delightful that it.
A local business.
Yeah.
Questions, concerns, or a motion? Motion, what, please?
Move that the select will award a contract to provide a disposal of construction and demolition agree to Sean Harris Enterprises of Centuate, Massachusetts for one hundred and forty nine dollars per tonne. Estimated contract amount, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second, uh, go with Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, that's it for our exciting contracts, and now we'll leave you with Mike in the show's hand, learn all the details, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Sean Harris provides, um, dumpster and costume.
Are you able?
Good, I mean.
Well.
Just say it, we mean that. I just want to talk to you right.
All right, one fifty five, our books, no, sorry, just a second. All right. You might tell us all about, we know there's lots of success. And there's a lot of things happening. And yet, the threats and everything else, the only getting more developed and odder and weirder, AI and everything else. Tell us what else to expect. Give us the future.
I mean, we're, we're just continuing to get more and more into security because we have to, since, you know, we have to be right a hundred percent of the time. The bad act only needs the right most. So, so when you look at it like that, it's, uh, pretty concerning. Uh, we, in, 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 uh, this past summer, we actually went through two independent audits, cybersecurity audits. You guys will probably be very well those at some point, we'll need to get a definitive summary for, uh, for them. One of them was funded by Plymouth County and, uh, they did all of the committees in Plymouth County. And at what, at some point through the process, they had maybe half the time was done. And at that point, we were the highest ranking, so, uh, I haven't found out yet, once they've finished it, how, what our ranking is at. That was pretty good for us, nonetheless, there's still areas for improvement. That goes into, uh, actually from my budget requests. But yeah, I mean, overall, we've been busy and there was security they focused, that we, we deal with it, look at it, and analyze it, we, we tweak it from a daily basis. So we've, we've done a lot there. And we're doing with this level upgrades now, with Microsoft's, uh, duplicating with the scent next year, Microsoft Office is being duplicated, so we're going with the boxing up to be funded, uh, meetings, we'll be purchasing the latest version of Microsoft Office. And we're continuing to segregate water and sewer locations from each other, and so within the one apartment, uh, each, each wellhead or each filter building is continually segregated, uh, uh, for network security purposes, we're connecting them through a fiber brand that we won. And so the last couple have been going toward, uh, water and sewer sites. So we're on the second water and sewer fiber brand. And each time you do that, it's a follow, the second part of that project is the network segregation that I mentioned. We're doing, uh, a lot more with police department now, um, they're they're just kind of more capable than ever. New CAD system, new mobile devices that commit A and B vehicles, police firefighter, uh, those are looking at and piloting some new equipment. So lots of stuff of, uh, in that particular part.
What keeps you up?
No, and I mean that, just like, what you're like, oh no, this is so word up.
Yeah, uh, honestly, the other thing that keeps me up is the quantity of things that we have, that we go. Yeah, volume, yeah, it's the sheer volume of things that, uh, literally racing through my head at three o'clock. There are some significant, actually, let me back, let me back it up, there are some issues that need to be addressed here, I actually had a meeting scheduled to be hard to go over. So we'll, we'll talk about that, this is continuity, basically, this is a big thing there. We had a, we had a good example of that in July, when CrowdStrike took the world down.
Yep.
And crashed, uh, twenty computers. We weren't immune to that, we lost, uh, I think the numbers were forty percent of our workstations and thirty percent of our servers. Thankfully, there was a quick fix, eventually, um, but it was, it was, I call it a free training exercise or a free peek as to what, what a actual cyber event would look like, we got locked up, a lot of users essentially. Uh, although it wasn't, you know, we weren't cryptalocked, the computers became disabled. Um, out of that came some, we did a conversation, we thought, well, how can we make it able, um, if our financial system's encrypted? How are we gonna fuel these cars? If our financial systems encrypt, how are we gonna fuel these cars and fire trucks if the computer that controls fuel pumps are encrypted? So those such conversations that immediately had. Beginning conversations.
Is there a move anywhere for some of these systems to come forward? Unless do I get dumb? Like, seriously, like, everything is connected, everything, some of these would be really destroying some of the mob or like, what really is? Or just trying to get ahead of the hackers? I mean, what's really the best way?
That's what I mean. Sometimes we're old school. Well, like, well, the water department, for example, there's, there's, so they have the enterprise network, just like every other buildings, they can access the file share, news, printing, even all that stuff. And then they escape the system, they're controlled, all the industrial control, the, the flow of the valves, the meters, the water, the chemicals. Um, and then sewers, so, set up. The water department, SCAS network is air gapped, it's not connected to the internet. So I actually just went through an audit EPA on behalf of the water department. And, uh, you know, it begins when they're asking the questions and we're like, well, we're air gapped. It was an easy conversation and they're like, all right, next, you know, and it, and it gets easier that way.
Air gapped, that's the term, term for us, I guess that's, air gapped, okay, okay.
Not physically.
Not physically, yeah, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Old school.
Old school, exactly, old school, that's where it's going. You asked them.
No, I'm just curious, it's right. I mean, people that, you know, concerned, what is the way to?
We're careful for resources, water and sewer.
Yeah.
Sewers and fire. Police dispatch are probably the top three area after. We'll get to that next.
Any questions? If I dive into the numbers, please.
Well, I was looking at the numbers. So moving forward, if that's okay, if you're sure. Your, your, your request, you had two line, I understand the, uh, you change the personnel benefits and the, the change of the staff request, so I'm not gonna get into that, but you have only got the two line items that were changed. Your technical services, you had requested forty-four thousand six hundred dollars more. And your information technology, you requested twenty thousand dollars more. This budget, are you gonna be able to do what you need to do without those two line item values?
No, but that's gonna be part of the conversation that I have to meet tomorrow. So I'll go over them in detail right now, or set up in, in some detail. The, um, the technical services increases were, there were three elements there. So, uh, the first, four, four elements, the first element, I got a little too excited when I realized through cost savings, I was able to have a zero dollar increase on existing contracts, existing services. We, uh, we realized some savings through fully migrating off of a whole system network switches onto our extreme network switches. We no longer had to carry those very expensive maintenance plans for Cisco. Instead of, and several other small little gains, they added up. We were able to, uh, have a level, level service at zero dollars. In my excitement, they were saying, hey, we have a zero dollars level service. One of the things that did change was the Adobe Acrobat subscription. So we currently own a perpetual licenses. We have fifteen standards and three professional licenses. Adobe has, uh, uh, been an alleged supporter of that and we are going to be forced to either pay for an annual subscription or not have. So that's eighteen hundred fifty dollars that I labeled as new. In hindsight, I probably should have labeled that as a level service. Um, and then, um, our virtual infrastructure warranty for year six is due. I need an additional fifteen thousand for that. Again, doesn't exist currently in my operating budget, so it's going to be net new for costs. But again, my, I may unlabel that as new, but it probably should have been level service. Uh, again, conversation there. Um, the other elements were for new network access controller. So I, I mentioned earlier, um, network segregation, segmentation, excuse me, uh, segment, uh, the different aspects of water and sewer departments. Well, I want to do that across our enterprise network. So that way, the water departments, enterprise network, you know, the, uh, the file grid, units, all that, that network, those computers. If something happened there that were compromised, it doesn't spread laterally across. And next thing you know, the senior center's being impacted, or the library's being, this type of award, the police department's being impacted. We can start segregating those. Uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a good security posture. It would be something considered advanced. Not critical, particularly being figured out. It's not a criticism like the other two things that I just mentioned. So we've turned a bit without it. And then, uh, last was the IT capital LA. This is an annual recurring request, trying to get it up to, uh, seventy thousand. We did last year, it was an increase, um, after the budget cycle, we were able to get an additional pin in there. But the goal is seventy, so we can get on a smooth replacement cycle of twenty percent a year. Right now, there's just not enough money in there, twenty percent a year. So what happens is periodically we have to go get a capital request. Uh, and, you know, so for example, last year we did, um, public safety, uh, the building was, uh, seven years old, now six years with a request and we on, you could just need to be replaced. That was a capital request or something that I could refund that as a capital, I, I, I can capital out of my operating. So again, we're just trying to build that up when we can, so I can smooth out the replacement cycle.
So double up on, of course, how much? I know a lot of other departments are able to do, there's like bulk buying, uh, to like, not all of county, but there's different state agencies for different bulk buying. Is there enough for, for IT, for types of stuff you're doing?
Yeah.
Or not really?
Providing up a state contract, so you are, yeah, so average value is now, okay. So, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a flat fee from state.
Thank you, Stipper.
Yeah, did I ask a question? One, the new, um, position you recommended, the justification wasn't included. It says CD memo and then there was no memo.
So, uh, so as I mentioned earlier, with some of the projects that I have going on with water and sewer department in terms of all the new fiber, the new networks, new coverage certification, uh, new security after water and sewer. In recent years, very recent years, in adding a large number of security technology. So go back just five years ago, we had, we really had any, quite literally, we had, um, input detection and we had very good pattern policy. Uh, now we have well over twelve security systems. A much more complex network. There's a tremendous amount of grant money and grant opportunity out there for security services. Many of them we can't entertain simply because we don't have the resources to go potentially. We have, uh, we have a long list of projects that have been on the list for a couple of years, trying to get accomplished, but we just haven't made it through across the finish line, simply because we're just drowning in the day to day.
Okay, so I think you answered my second question. It was like, if we don't have the position, what do we do?
The end of the ground.
We, we won't be doing, and I'm curious, what is the list of stuff? What is all the, I'm, I'm just that.
Sure, I can.
Be what I would want to know.
I, go ahead.
And then my third question would be, what are our other options? Because it's, I mean, we're in a tough spot budgetarily with the new growth. Not being where we'd like it to be in order to have, you know, increased employees. Do I just want to, we've got other options and then I think it's really important for us to know what we are like operating on, so what we're not doing by not, by not having that.
Yeah, so it, it, to answer the, what we're not doing, uh, I can partially answer that with, and also answer the other question of what's the list? That's pretty much what we're not doing. So as an example, you know, we have the day to day stuff. We have, uh, that, that's the stuff that we grant very grant, okay? It's the, it's the, uh, abnormal problem that just showed up out of nowhere.
Karen never remembered your password.
But then we have like, you know, the library, they have twenty computers that need to be updated. So that's, that's a weak square for one person at a time. You know, the state, it's software that we have to unfreeze it. I think we call it RIT. We then have to update them, and then we have to freeze it. Uh, it's quite a process. You know, we're, we're working with, uh, the senior center on some, some, some equipment over there, public safety we're getting. The IT is now managing, we're going to be taking over the, the radio network for police anti-fire. The radio vendor hasn't, uh, hasn't been terribly receptive, uh, responsible, excuse me. I'm getting more involved into that because we have a lot of network switches that need to be patched. There are security vulnerabilities on those. So unfortunately, I'm, I'm taking some of my time to get involved in, in that. This is a project that's been lingering for a while, the public safety has to integrate fingerprints with IMC, the police department. That, that's just, that's just one of those projects that, uh, you know, we've got to get done, but it's been lingering for a while. We're now about to begin a project. I actually started it today. We're taking, we have about twenty-five inch NDTs to go through the fire, to work on moments. And then we're going to be bringing them all in off the road one at a time. And rebuilding with Windows eleven, updating all this software. Hardening them with periodic settings and then taking back into the crews and the fire and the ambulances. On that one, we actually wanted to begin in the spring. We had to keep kicking it back and down the road, never trying to get to it. We're at a point where we can't kick it down the road anymore because our days with Windows ten are numbered. And if we can hold one in and off the road at a time, that drags up probably. You know, there's, there's a bunch more, we said that, like, he was, it was fire, hard man. Saying, yeah, they, they're looking for some NDTs in general, we're redoing the ambulances, we just, we just got new, uh, my advice for the ambulances. The water department, I mentioned earlier, that EPA, it's now a response that I have to, I have to, uh, create with, with the general, with the water department, then who have, uh, write a response, put a form, put a plan, actually plan together. A lot of it is policies which will follow the water, water department, some of it's technology related, which will follow me. We have that most recent fiber brand that we want, that's, that probably still has to be executed. So that's, that's adding higher, more, more water and more store locations, followed by more network switches, followed by more segmentation. Implementing a new ticketing system to help us into the facilities departments, we can keep track of our calls. Have a better idea of where it has been spent. And, yeah, it was.
Most good luck.
Yeah, most good luck. And then this will be abbreviated.
That was a good play.
So that, I think, answers both, both the questions. That's the stuff that's been on the list for a long time. That it's hard to move. Like, for example, we, we originally wanted to start the police NDTs in the spring. Um, then we just, it never came to the provision, certainly because it's just constantly being pulled in their directions. So when you asked me earlier, what key can you awake at night? It's literally those kind of things.
Well, there's lots to think about on our side. Everything you know, that you've accomplished, if you think about where we're come. It's amazing what we've done, amazing. All the departments, everything that's all connected and water and sewer, so I really do appreciate it. I mean, that sincerely, I mean professionalism, it was basic, well. Summers, veteran services, five forty-three, how are you?
Good, how are you? Good evening.
Getting quite done, it's just.
Yeah. Brilliant.
Well, all right.
Clearly, you've never done a line, possibly, sir.
There's some days when you're bothered.
Yes.
All right. Well, mine will be nearly as elaborate as Mike's. Uh, my budget is pretty much the exact same as FY twenty-five, so it will be FY twenty-six. With a couple of little line item increases, uh, very small increase, uh, in budget for care of veterans' graves. What that encompasses is flying even twice a year, plus, uh, medallions that we put out for families, uh, for different conflicts or conflicts and then different veteran status. Uh, those prices have gone up, so you didn't buy things like that. Uh, then office supplies and mileage reimbursement. Uh, I found that I'm making, uh, quite a few trips around, either to conferences or to, uh, maybe pick up paperwork sometimes at veterans' houses that don't have transportation. Uh, that live in some of the public housing, you know. When I recertify them twice a year, um, it's very time sensitive. In fact, we're getting ready to go through this week anyway. And of course, everybody that we have to recertify, none of them have, you know, transportation. So a lot of times I have to go to their, you know, the houses and things like that, pick up paperwork. So that's, that reflects. We're currently roughly, uh, as of today, uh, for December two thousand twenty-four, we're spending approximately fifty-three hundred dollars a month. Chapter one fifteen benefits for our low income veterans. Uh, that equals about sixty thousand dollars a year currently. That's just up from last month where it was like fifty-five thousand dollars last month. So in one month, which is a good problem, seeing as how word of mouth is getting around Situate, we're getting new people in every week. So whether they, they qualify or don't qualify, we have many more people coming in looking for those state benefits. Uh, which is good because even if we spend our entire allowance of a hundred thousand a year, uh, of course, the state reimburses seventy-five percent of that back to the town. So it's a good program. Uh, we want to spend more money in that area. Means we're helping more veterans in our community by doing that. And again, the state's reimbursing Situate seventy-five percent of that amount. So I foresee that to grow every month. Um, it's grown every other month since I've been here, uh, which isn't very long, so I hope that keeps, keeps going.
Yeah, absolutely. That's fabulous. Let me, uh, we open it up.
I'm gonna follow up on that question. So that, so you would recommend in putting in the budget to fall hundred thousand. And then we can get the right line and then Jim cut it down, but it's, it's kind of, it's not, because it's seventy-five percent.
Right, well, and, and that number's gonna change, you know, and not to be more, but if a veteran passes away, obviously that benefit goes away. And then for gaining more, uh, clients, I would say, every month, then that could go up. If I gain two clients, that could be twenty-four thousand dollars a year. So.
Right, but so, but the net cost to the town isn't really reflected here because
Right.
if you do it in a hundred thousand, you know, it's only seventy-five percent of the forty, it's not. They can understand.
And to be, Jim, just to clarify, or Nancy, right? This number, we're getting close to that number, there are, we're not gonna tell that.
No, and I'm not, correct, that number is, right, Jim and Nancy, now we've had conversations, we're all on the same page with it, we're, we're, yeah.
Yeah, it's, this is.
We never understood until we posted the number, when we did the budget.
Right.
So Josh brought in new classes, said it's very fluid, you have people that pass away. Some of those people go on the state and they can move on to federal, we don't see them anymore. So it is very fluid. It would be a place, we have extra money that we're probably, record, we're probably just back.
The record.
But no one is, no one is going to be denied that.
I just want, as clear as possible, that, doesn't matter that much.
So the budget is already, is ten thousand or more than the actuals.
Correct.
So you have to, and you never. All right.
I want to be clear, so.
Thank you for following me out here to the job. It really is, we need to go, some game posts.
Practice tomorrow, please.
Practice tomorrow, the Life Care Center, nine thirty.
I just think you do probably one of the best jobs is to pull down.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I have two questions. One on the accomplishments. You say you're close to installing the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Bronze Plaque.
Yes.
How close is that? I know that.
So right now, the BAC, the Situate Veterans Advisory Council, I can lead on that, Mr. Joe Kelly.
Yep.
He's, he'd been working on that, maybe just to my employment with the town. The last thing is we finalized numbers from the Foundry that is making this bronze plaque that basically, like, once they're done with this thing, it's gonna last a hundred years. It'll outlast the rock.
Like all the other ones. That's the funny, that's the odd thing. The other memorials have the.
Correct. The issue they're looking at right now, and they're working with a stone mason, is the existing rock that's there now that you cannot read the engraving on it.
Right, right.
But the names is. I'm not like a rock expert, but will that, if they basically grind it down flat to adhere the new bronze plaque. Is that going to last as long as the bronze plaque? Because that rock might has already gotten smaller since it was installed however many years ago. So that's what they're kind of.
It's a smaller rock there, it is.
Yes.
Go ahead, yeah. It's interesting, you have to think about that a hundred, you know, it's interesting to think.
Right, I don't know, it honestly looks like a big piece of quartz to me, but again, I'm not a rock expert, so.
Yeah, I I was just curious, I know it's 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 been something I've heard for a while, and you really can't read the name.
Correct, and we just have, we want to have a backup plan where if they're installing that or when they're grinding it down, if it breaks, then what? You know, were there families that, you know, put money towards that originally, we want to respect that and then obviously do what's right for this new bronze plaque that's on the way. That's the rest.
Okay.
We could get answers for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to do that, okay.
And then another question is, I just didn't even know this was a goal, goal number three. Fix the existing problems with the WPA building and move in and have that be a veteran. I guess I didn't even know that was a goal. And then do we have like a capital, like let's talk on a cost, is it in our capital?
Right, so this is an ambitious goal.
Is this, it's because it's not in capital, so where would it be? For the twenty twenty-six budget, like it's not going to happen in time.
No.
Since it's not in the budget.
Correct.
I mean, I don't dislike, it's a good idea, but.
Yeah, so if this is something, actually, I'm uh we're revisiting after the holidays with a group of people. We're trying to put together the right people that can help um get us towards this goal, so it is an ambitious goal. There are six veterans centers across the state right now. A couple of them are through the town, some of them are more more regional aspect, but they are great things. Sarah, actually, who works with me, uh brought my attention to that building, and I went and looked at it and I said, hey, it's a town building. We're paying, they have the lights on already. Uh does need some improvements uh on the outside of the building. Uh as well as some some, you know, data issues, I've talked to Mike about that already, getting fiber optics to the building. It's probably the largest challenge that we're looking at right now. That's already been priced out with Mike and his crew, and that was a pretty, pretty big price tag, to be honest with you. Uh and then making it ADA compliant. The the ramp that was done in two thousand nine, the brick walkway is not compliant anymore, so that would have to be addressed. Uh and then some little things like the stonework that's in the front, steps are not safe. So we have to kind of landscape it, you know, do a little bit of work there. So I don't want veterans with walkers going up and down the stone steps, things like that. But that being said, the location, the parking, it being a town building already. I think it could just be a fabulous opportunity for community outreach. So many programs could be run out of there. The Legion could use it for meetings, the VAC could use it for meetings. There's conference tables in there, the upstairs is already finished office, the inside, the bathroom's already ADA compliant. Uh it it could be a place, a resource center for vets to come and go, even if it's to get a cup of coffee and tell a little C stories. Maybe it appeals to younger vets uh in the community that might be out there, that they can come to a place like that and use it as a resource center where I think younger vets, uh let's be honest, may not think about going to the senior center to to get help because they're they're worker, they have families or the stigma says about going to a senior center and they're a twenty-five year old better. I think the the possibilities are honestly endless with what we could do there. And and you never know, we could reach out to towns like Cohasset or Norwell. And it's where it is in North Situate right there, is kind of a hub for other towns where, hey, if they needed help and I'm not saying they're not getting help in their communities already, but if it was just another place where they could meet with other vets and talk about similar things, I think that would be an opportunity there.
You don't see it anywhere because when Josh came in there, I said, he came in a pilot, Josh, please, can we add there once the cost back?
Yeah.
And as I said, the the cost of bringing the fiber there is six figures.
Yeah.
Really?
You don't have a fiber anywhere in that in that area, so.
I think it's three miles, Mike said, what it would be to get fiber optics, basically from the public safety building to North Situate.
Well, I get a penny, so.
So basically, I said, go find out what it's going to cost to, if all the blood can even consider, we need to know. And also, and that was all like, so that's what he's working on.
And that's what I'm working on.
No, it's in the spring, I mean, I building, I love the building and it's underutilized.
And it's it's just sitting there.
I've met there, I've made a pair of four, but it's definitely underutilized.
Yeah, and then, but just us being there would be a caretaker alone for about a store building, basically.
Well, that was a one thing I would like in our one more meeting this year, and I mentioned this to the chair, is to have a conversation of, are we going to are we going to request of our state legislature's earmarks in the fiscal twenty-six budget, which will be filed in January? Uh and what is the board's priorities, urgent priorities that we might, you know, they're going to have the same situation. Before we had numbers, it seemed I was going to advocate for um refining some funds for this because the that is budget is one of those ones that's not happened there that much, so. I hadn't heard about the fiber costs, but I I would really like to have that conversation in our next meeting about are we going to get anything, who knows, but they don't ask you though.
Correct. The the number's pretty high for the fiber optics, about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. But a lot of the things, when you look at the breakdown of that, I think could be eliminated and that number could be little down a little bit. There's just something, but still a lot.
Fifty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand.
Right.
We'll have to look at, you know, other priorities and what we're going to go hand in hand for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
That was a good one, that's a good one.
It is a good one.
Especially if you know the fiber optics number, because that's, yeah, and you can do the other stuff after.
It that that would be the thing, the work would would not be time sensitive, you know, we can just get it done when we can get it done, if it has to be in phases.
The words of faith are being a little bit pregnant, right, sorry, right here.
Yeah, anyway. Great, thank you.
I love that line. Um before we go.
Yes.
About Jesse behind you.
Correct.
I think we've mentioned this one, I love talking about we used to do that World War Two memorial, I think you mentioned it quickly. Um or what happened that really didn't used to be there.
The wood cabinet, right, the.
I don't know, I didn't know, it was before I even looked at it.
I've got a few photos tracked down of it, but um.
I'm just putting that as I don't want to forget it.
We've we've.
Next year's budget.
We actually have a veteran, one of our Vietnam guys is on it, he's been trying to do what he can and track it down, but uh yes, I would, I would like to see that.
Or something new.
There's something new.
Reactive.
There's no.
Anyway, I just wanted to, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
All right.
All right. Steve, sorry, a lot of good conversations, Steve.
It's all good.
So this is good. All right, two thirty. There are books, how are you?
Thank you, how's everyone?
Good, you too.
Um before I get going on the budget too, I'd just like to mention with her, how much folks are hurt, which we kind of recognize, we've had a number of officers in the department this week. Present dispatchers and past officers, uh and just wanted to kind of recognize that, that the community's been fantastic. Over the past few days, the pad services, just the outpouring support and everything, they're great, so. A little bit more to get through the week, but uh really, really appreciate all the support.
Thank you.
Okay. Communications.
Good.
Yeah. So this is um pretty much a straightforward uh piece in terms of a budget. Uh this is something that would roll a bit on the this department over the past few months with more direct oversight. Uh but it's still the public safety operation of police, fire and UMS, like it always has been. Uh we really just kind of can tighten things up a little bit in terms of some of the new amendments, be able to be into efficiencies. The focus for us as we go into the coming year is really on those policies and procedures. Um work on staffing, and we have a big initiative coming up with the implementation of the new CAD system. So that's going to be a big focus in terms of technology, and that's obviously going to drive a lot of this standard operating procedures, protocols. Um and kind of the way we're working here, so there's a lot of new technology that we're coming with that. And really, it's it's about efficiencies and it's about just being about the best of the system. So there will be a a big focus on technology and a big focus on, I mean, as it is kind of, I think, always the case, staffing winds up being um you know, a key concern for us and challenge to make sure that we have adequate staffing. We have great people there, they're trained properly, and we're continually moving them forward. So that's going to be definitely a key for us. And um this past year, there was implementation of the new technology, and we talked about it before. Which basically allows us to kind of have enhanced number one, and that's, it's been really successful, the fire department may kind of spearhead that. And we're looking forward to kind of continuing that integration with the new CAD. Um so otherwise, with this, the budget is really personal, um pretty much makes it up entirely. Some increases there just because of collective bargaining, um but otherwise, it's it's pretty straightforward.
Especially in terms of these costs. I'm good.
Yeah, it's not funny.
Yeah. Yeah, I find it so difficult, I love the fact that those are able to do that, so.
It's one of those things that uh I mean, it really is the first piece of public safety operations and it's so critically important. Uh so I know kind of go by it quickly because in some ways the budget is easy, but it's the foundation that everything is built upon that we need for police and fire operations.
So it's incredible, the first word, right, first calm you down and uh.
So unsung heroes, I think, a lot of times, what's going on and what's happening while we're being those, you know, this kind of personnel thing out there. Uh but they do an incredible job on the nice team, do a lot of work.
Okay. Do you have a ten for?
Okay, so um with with the assumption you folks have already done some light reading and yeah, and now.
Yes.
And and gone into things. You know, if we look at, just kind of go through how to check it out, the goals and objectives, uh policy system, procedures, it's number one, continues to be number one for us. You know, as as I think Mike Mcello was talking about with IT, we suffer the same thing. We have a vested intention when the day starts and then six different fires happen, which that's a little bit of a fire partner, but um in your your priority shift for the day, that you wind up not being able to always get accomplished what you want, so. Uh that is a goal that we have to get through with the preparation. We continue to put that on the forefront and we'll make that a focus. Emergent preparedness is another huge goal and that's looks at across the board, so that's how are we going to deal with the hurricane, how are we going to deal with power edges, trees down, active shooters, you name it, we have to look at that in the total prep of what would happen in our community if any of these emergencies happen. Are we prepared for them, how we work with our mutual aid partners, how we work with our internal partners? And really being able to game those out and make sure that we're in a good place and identify any shortfalls that we have. Um the department initiatives, CAD RMS, I keep talking about, but that's going to be the big one. Officer wellness, and we have a a cattle project that we put in there to upgrade uh the the power and electronics on our smaller boat. We've got a homeless security grant for that, which has been a fund, a big portion of it, so those are big initiatives for us that we'll be looking at dealing with. And then community engagement is, we always talk about this, um but how can we engage the community more successfully? How can we communicate better, how can we build the relationships more, how do we let people know what we're doing? And how do we hear that feedback and what would we do better? So that always is kind of a key thing for us.
Good luck.
Right, you need some more face time.
Yeah.
I was, I was talking to Taylor actually before I came out, I was like, it might be awkward and flop, I mean, and we'll mess with everybody. I can call them. So risks and challenges, um number one is obviously fiscal this year feels different, I think, than some of the years past. Um so knowing that, understanding where our place is, and I think with everybody, how can we help the town as a whole? Knowing that we're going to have to make some sacrifices. But I I kind of had this thing that I myself didn't, in Nancy and Jimmy trust, so. As, you know, as there's going to be some things on the front end that we know we're going to have to deal with. Backside, I'm very confident that Jim and Nancy know what our priorities are and we're going to be able to make things up, and so you know, we'll get a breach to to making sure that we're recovered. Officer recruiting, pensionate, developing keys. Making sure that we're getting the best officers, we're out of school service now, but they're very successful so far. But then retaining those officers and continuing to help them. Um I think that's one of the things that when we talk to other communities, officers in other communities, we do a great job of building of development paths for people, particularly in a smaller environment where maybe there's not a room for growth that you might expect. Uh but giving people opportunities that they might not otherwise get, um so that their feet don't go asleep. Um we're recruiting great people and smart people, uh and then you don't give them a pass to continue to develop, you're going to lose them. Whether you lose them internally, um or whether you lose them somewhere else, so that is definitely key. Mental health, it's on there, right, we talked about this, internal and external. One of the things you'll notice the continuing rise that we're seeing in a lot of calls that we're dealing with that have mental health components. Um what can we do about that, how can we help the community better? Um are there resources that we should be capping that we're not? Um and always continually looking at that and making sure that our officers are prepared for that. I do think our officers do an incredible job, and we call it, they do it too, how do they deal with the mental health of that, whether it's somebody who's truly in crisis or it's just the call that somebody's dealing with this termite for them, how do we de-escalate that, different resources that they need to move to, so that we're all getting the situations. Uh technology, again, internal and external, keep talking about CAD RMS, what can we do internally to improve, how can we be more efficient? Uh efficient for our officers, being able to provide better information back to the community. But also that technology piece is what everyone is dealing with in their own homes. Um cybercrime, scams, those white collar crimes, where the money is going, how those things are happening. I was just reading about something before I came over, um how that's affecting youth, how kids are being targeted. What's happening with online exploitation? Uh so if we're not focused on that and we're not here to be able to address that knowledge, that understand it, at least identify it, and if we don't have resources in horse house, how do we go out and get them? Um we need to continue to focus on that, and it's it's going to increase exponentially as AI and other technologies are increasing, what we're going to be exposed to. Uh so that's going to be a huge focus for us, and it's certainly something that situates you to learn, connect into the world here. Uh and all of this comes down to interest community impacts. We have officers who especially did this to that, who are marked especially by rules. Uh but everything we do comes back to how are we going to serve the community better, and both of those sides. Being reactive, getting out to the calls and handling your emergency calls for services, but how to continue to build trust, move forward so that when your crisis happens, we already have conditions in place. Then I guess our our last thing is the compliments, in case that is last at least, but as we referenced Lou, um the UT nine that we've had, um has been a great success so far, we're continuing to build that program. You know, he's continuing to mature officer buildings, he's continuing to mature with that program. Uh within the county, from the county, he's had incredible success with that. Um I was just at ICP, that's becoming a model that both departments all around the country are looking at. And there's such an incredible appetite for this because there's understanding how successful this successful can be dealing with mental health and internal maintenance. Uh we've had a pretty successful grant sent to the National Home Security Grant, we've had no one with the traffic grants. And we're really relying on that K nine equipment that's come through the from the county, uh TJ's offices come through with this. Uh so continuing to find ways that we can help to get additional equipment and services outside of our business, what we're doing. Maritime efforts continue, I mean, like I really pleased the fact that every year I feel like we're continuing to move in the right direction. Uh getting better, more comfortable, better collaboration, and we have an unmoveable year this year for the postcard. In terms of working with point out and working with the sector, being really recognized in the region as a partner. Uh Situate is definitely at the forefront of what's happening, um and having those relationships again to build those. OTEC, great things with the Humvees, the high water rescue vehicles, incredible program, incredible work that they did. Uh that was really, truly amazing. Yeah, I would kind of brought this up as far, hope we're dealing with externality, but how can we leverage technology? And yeah, we kind of brought this up as far, hope we're dealing with externality, but how can we leverage technology internally? Some new software that we're using now, we're just at the forefront of using that, but being able to give officers information at their fingertips. It's great to have policy and procedures. It's unfortunate that the only time you use them is when, you know, case emergency break class. The, the volume of information that officers are required to know is, I know it's too much to remember and to handle. So how can you very easily put all of that information at somebody's fingertips that they can wrap them, gain it, have access to it? And be able to then actively use it. And the last thing is the E O C. If he was listening to my presentation, I feel bad about if he's going. At least, please, but.
Want to help the guy out a little bit?
No, try it, right? Keep trying to feed him work. E O C, just wrapping up that project. You know, that was a long time, currently capital project, but Mike definitely did a great job. Being, being on top of that and thinking of technology is going to really pay off as far as what we can kind of give back and the tools that we have, so. Walk through the numbers. There's a lot, there's a lot there. I feel like it was probably just scratching the surface, but you know, the budget. There are a lot of numbers there. You know, if, if the numbers always went up, and of course they have to go up because of collective bargaining and dealing with personnel side. And that's basically the driver of this contractually. There were things that we gained some savings as we initially shipped the new CAT RMS that we used to try to offset some of our costs. Nancy Jiminy making tough decisions and we know that, we recognize that, that we know that we need to be more hard. And we'll adapt and overcome. And like I said, it's going to come back around. So we've been, you know, the big, big cuts for us came on the capital equipment side with the couple cruisers. We've been fortunate, Officer Billings is, is our fleet manager and does an incredible job of keeping things really, really tight and running really well. So I would be probably here with a box of Kleenex if we weren't already in a really good place. It sets us back a little bit, but we're going to recover. And I think we've been in a really strong position right now that came to this. We'll go to, we'll come back a little bit and we'll do things. So we'll, we'll, like I said, part of the team here and you know, we've got all the required.
It's, first of all, I would say thank you for the whole review and everything, especially the outreach. Every year there's almost a new element that seems to always improve on in the mental health aspect and now outreach and everything else, but I think from our perspective, I mean, all the, this is, a lot of this budget and it's, it's hard this year because I really feel like we're at a crossroads. Because of all the unknowns going forward. And so, yeah, it's a bit for us, it's stressful because we look at some of these and we say, hey, that's that makes us nervous and because we want to make sure ourselves, I mean. Just know that we're always looking for every, every penny that we can for this. This is not a I, I just had to say that because it is. We, we talk about it all the time, how it's a very weird scary time financially.
Financially, it's a hard time and the, what's not getting recommended is staff. Additional staff. And that's again, our question for everything. What are we foregoing? Or does that increase overtime or what it does? I don't know. It looks like we're kind of flat on overtime, like 21% and it was 90% last year. So it's not like that changes that much.
And that's one of the tough things I think that we face because, you know, we've talked a lot about seasonal things and being able to staff, but we talked about these other initiatives that we're working out with mental health and making sure that we're in the schools. I mean, those are the two top priorities that we've had great success with the addition of N R S R O. But we're, we still know that we're lacking in that elementary schools. We're, we're still being reactive and not being proactive. But those are the things that overtime doesn't necessarily fix. Because we can also say, hey, we want to do these initiatives, but we need enough officers to work. And then there becomes too much work. And then, hey, we need to cover beaches on the weekend. Well, a lot of times it's up to get people to work on the weekends. So throwing money at the problem in that way doesn't always solve the way we want it to.
So you mentioned that, a quick question on that. Is one of these requests us an S R O?
So that there are five out there.
I thought they were all the same.
Yeah, and they're basically chiseled. It would be internally how we look at things.
Oh, okay.
And we would say like, okay, where do we look to slot? And inform me the top two, if we had bodies would be an S R O. It would be somebody who's a specific mental health liaison. They would work much more collaboratively with, with Erica, a social worker, work with other outside entities that we partner with to make sure that social services need to be met. Just that's a, it's a huge lift. There, there's a lot happening.
Yeah. No, that's helpful. And that would be number one. And number two is S R O then now. Okay. Yeah. I, I just want, in this discussion, talking about emergency management, the town has an emergency management plan. So it's not like that's a policy that's not created, it's going to be improved. So just we do a great job of emergencies. We get a lot of challenges in there. So I want to make sure. Generally, a question, it used to be the social worker is partially in your budget and I don't see, no, she never was, out of it.
She's under the board of health.
Board of health. She's in board of health, okay. But how much she does out of it, is it a good amount to help you?
We look to, it's a push case load to her. So as we identify families and incidents that we, we run into, we have an officer right now who is part-time, kind of looks at things as an extra duty to make sure that things aren't slipping through the cracks, but.
Okay, but they were, you refer her, okay. She's not talking to anybody on, on visit or anything, okay. Is there any penalty under the post like legis, legislation? If we don't staff up like at certain point, if we're under staff according to the post? No. It's there.
From, from post standpoint, they're not looking at our staffing, they're looking at our procedures, our, our training that we find within, if you see that our officers are following what they should be and then they're going to look at if you stray outside of that, if there are complaints, if there are officer issues, that's what post is going to do.
But our problem is that the change to seasonal markers.
Correct. The, the change really came in with the on-the-go trainings required. So that right, so that's more pre-dramatically. So that pathway into law enforcement has changed for matter. Where before that for us was our, our
beer.
It was our beer. And so, right, so the coastal communities are feeling that impact and it's just a matter of, as our users on the west coast look at it, it's safe. So how do we address that? And how do we pivot and kind of, so then we could effectively imagine what you have to do with this in terms of those things. So how do we handle our seasonal business that we have? But then by the same token for the other six, eight months of the year when that comes down, what are the other things then that we can be looking at and addressing? It's, it's a, it's an opportunity to actually become better. And provide greater service while still then addressing the season. So that's again, why, you know, an S R O, it's like, all right, well, that's kind of perfect. And school's out, we can focus on the summer. Now you have somebody who is already working with the kids, which may be a place where, hey, there's a target problem. So those relationships are being built throughout the school year, but they're freed up in the school now. They can go out and begin with things that happen in the beach and spit it off. So it's, it's winds up being there. That's a win in combination.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. I'm good. You're good?
Yeah.
I'm good. One, S R Os don't get funded any for the school, it's solely for the town, right?
No, they don't.
They do.
They.
Oh, they do?
Yep.
So it would be a part.
Yeah, and we did the one that's a split.
It would be a split.
A split. Split.
Okay. As a chicken. No, I know it. I just want to make sure. Yep. That's something to talk about, well.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Excellent. Just already, man.
How are you?
Good.
I'm glad we got the, the two waiting ones for back to back, you know, like.
Okay, I'll just, um, just run through the goals, but accomplishment, I wasn't noticed. Okay, this one's been, been here before. We're still working on the Gates Middle School generation because we really want to make that a primary shelter. The generator that's the school was built, but it was only designed to do the life safety systems, the power, lighting, minimal heat, so the spring system doesn't freeze, fire alarm system, et cetera. It's the same. Some other safety devices in the building. In order to operate that as a shelter, we almost have to double up the generated capacity. This FEMA grant is, the emergency credit grant is moving along. As an update, since this was written, the matching grant funds were approved at the fall county meeting. So I reached out to Beamer and up to the, to the vote. This is moving along. It's, it sounds promising. Well, we're not going to order it yet to me for sure. So the next was the transition of the overpriced online department policies procedures platform to an existing, basically the, the software that we run the fire department with. And we were able to do that. They now walk from that and we're able to do this at quarter that costs over. So that's rolling up right now. And hopefully we'll be up in operation hopefully in, in a few months and to the point where every, every member of the department that has a question, they can pull it up on their phone. To be really nice, all the, all the, all the, all right, how do we handle this? The other is, is another ongoing communications initiative. It started with the Point of Coming fire chiefs. And it really, it really came to light as, how important this is during the last couple of months during the brush fire during the, you know, right towards the end of it. I remember we, we had sent the team up to the Blue Hills and then a brush fire breaks out in Allington. So we bring in a, a team from that city coming. So more and more with our departments of getting put together and mobilization and, you know, getting on, getting on the road and we're going into a different part of the state. We want to have we want to be able to have our truck radio so we can just move that, move that equipment. When we, when equipment's on the move, we're then communication will be able to operate once we get into other counties or where, you know, and the more and more traveling we do, we just, it's going to be paramount to keep that's, keep communication. So continually going on going now, we're going to, we're going to apply for an A F G federal grant to upgrade our portable radios because as we, as we've rolled it out, we have fairly state of the art equipment, but it's not in order to get the licensing to upgrade the capacity, it even, it makes more sense just to apply for another grant and we, and use these as trade-in and trade-out using grant money. Special operations unit, I think Chief Thompson talked a little bit about the, the Coast Guard coastal water responsibility. They're, they're scaling back. They're pulling back. They've, they've got staffing shortages, budget cuts. So there's more rely, more reliance on local, local services to respond to a lot of these inland waterways emergencies, especially where they're, they're more than probably state focused on the high seas and working with helicopters and some of those small stations, but other than the short period of time, we have that temporary seasonal boat haul. A lot of, a lot of this falls on fire crews and helicopters. So we, we, we think, we took a hard look at that. We realized that, you know, we need a lot more training. So we did. Well, I'll talk a little bit more about the, the swift water training, but we're we had a dive team, but we're realizing we're doing more than just diving. We're doing, we need to know how to operate a boat because we share the role of the hog master, the fire hose, we're training our operators. We're we're making that marine operators swift water. We, you know, we, we don't have really any real big rivers, like you see in other parts of the state, but we actually, we do, we do it for the larger tides. We ended up doing a rescue on the in Squash McQuan a couple of weeks ago. Somebody got pulled through the cupboard out into Squash McQuan. So it was exactly the exact same spot where we, we did our training back in here. So we, you know, we do the drill, we, we drop the boat in, we're we're able to rescue the individual, and she on the other side, but the, the server side, oh, excuse me. Still out of the training that we, we did back in the spring, that accident sponsor. It's really starting to pay off. The drone has been not only is a resource to us that the police has called us in, the drone operators are available. So we're going to expand, you know, we have two pilots now. We're probably going to go to four pilots. So we want to have that drone available all the time. So you can use it for brush fires, you can use it. A lot of these green incidents comes in as, hey, I see something in the water instead of launching boats or post guard helicopters, we go, we get back there and go. It's a track, you know, or something like that. So we can, we can sometimes free up resources a lot quickly and I've not seen it done yet, but they are growing. They are, is capable of carrying like, yeah, they don't drop. So, and it has infrared, yeah, this is some drone technology is, is really, really exciting.
Even this future.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
So we have.
But I mean, just the safety, think like, anything can happen, right? Just even if something's routine. Something that, I mean, the fact it gets in the, sorry.
In my CPR.
That's just amazing, right? No.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to talk too long about that. In my CPR class, I have a, a video from the Netherlands where you call nine one and they just draft a drone. Gets the cordless and the cell phone and it's next to the Asia. So hope you survive. Should you see that in a year someday. Really, it's really amazing though. And there's also there's a lot of, yeah, that's the good stuff. The bad stuff is there's a lot of evil intent.
We're saying the good stuff.
Yeah, we say it. But the homeland security is working a lot of things to prevent a lot of.
Black jacket that's fallen on my, that's amazing.
Yeah. So there's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of potential drones. We're training them in swift water and drone and a lot of the technical rescues. So we're, we're involved in the technical rescue team. And they're, they seem to be getting called out more and more. We rescued a dog from a well, the county team did. We were we were activated. I was actually activated on communications, but we, the dog, we sent a crew member down a twenty, a twenty-four inch pipe, eighteen feet down and grabbed the dog, pulled him up. It was just a quick blur on the news about it, but again, we're getting activated all the time. We've had a couple of lost hunters, we've had, when we were called by, by, you know, by police and all of that. So as we get more, more of our people trained in that too, we can, they bring that, they can bring those skills back, back to the department as well. Okay, for risk and challenges, we've made some progress with staffing. We had nine vacancies last year. We're currently at five and we're, we're working to do some recruiting and I'll talk a little about that in the accomplishments. Coastal playing is, the first four months of twenty twenty-four, we had we had an astronomical tide events where, you know, full streets to be blocked and we're seeing more and more of that. We'll get a little bit with the moon tide in, in November. And I'll prob, we'll probably see that through the winter months, you know, season over. We have to pay attention to that. We're continuing to work with Beamer on some of the hazard mitigation programs, like again with the generator and, and see things like that. As back to the, I, I, the incessant and sometimes frustrating word about FEMA reimbursements, translation, things that drive Nancy crazy. This is just a weekly, the, the weekly. It's just amazing. We're, the, the challenge that we have just, we're working on storm damage on the emergency management side going back.
Twelve years.
Yeah, twelve years, yeah. We're still working on repairing damage from twelve years ago. There is some progress with starting to combine some of these disasters into one project and Beamer's a sign of someone is really good at that. So we're seeing a little bit of help with that right now. And again, that's, that's an ongoing challenge. We'll continue on probably my successor, his successor and on and on. For accomplishments, we're we're making some good strides with recruiting. I've seen kind of a shift, a lot of young students. College, high school graduates have reached out to me and I made a point to bring them in and meet with them, give them a tour. And, and I've got about 10 to 12 prospects who are working right now. Some that have just don't know where to start, to some that are, that are finishing up, not finishing, but well into paramedic school right now. So
So across the state, you're getting high school, but if you're paramedic, how likely do you think you'd get it out somewhere?
As you're, if you were paramedic in Massachusetts.
Yes.
You have, you have multiple jobs.
Multiple, so it's at home.
Yeah.
Paramedic is a good option.
It's now, it's now the standard of care. You're seeing so much. But the, the Brockton Hospital fire was eye opening. We already, we already get a strained healthcare system. And we saw record breaking days at South Shore Hospital, six hour lengths in the waiting room. They saw, they wrote their, they, they hit a record. They never thought they had, they created 500 patients in one day. And it's just that, you know, they're now one of the busiest emergency rooms in the state.
I don't see AI taking paramedics away. I think everybody wants a real person.
No, the roles have changed.
Do you, you'll have a job for life?
They will, and I think their, their role's expanding. You'll see, there's a pilot program in LA, in LA city right now where the ambulance is staffed with one physician's assistant and one nurse practitioner, firefighter, trained to that level. That will go in and not rush the patient of the hospital, go in and try to mitigate a lot of the problems, try to correct some of the problems. Maybe it's an adjustment, get the doctor online. Mobile, you're going to hear words like mobile, two, two big words you're going to hear in the future. Mobile integrated, which is paramedics going up and doing follow up visits with patients that were seen in the emergency room in the last 24 to 48 hours. And you'll also see, and there's a pilot program going on right now called Hospital at Home with South Shore Hospital. They've got a tablet, the equipment in the room, the vital signs, and they basically remotely monitor you.
Right.
So so we're, you're going to see a lot of that because it's just, Brockton's now open, but we lost Kearney. So now Milton's there. Good Sam is down because Brockton's open, but now they're being managed by Boston Medical Center. Do I want to drive into Boston, the Boston Medical Center, or, you know, I'm down in that area. Maybe I should drive to this area. I'll see it. So there's some positives happening out there. Again, the biggest challenge I think of this is, my niece works in a Brigham and she brings emergency room. She says hi, she's a PH because I'm primary care. I'm doing primary care for a lot of the patients. Lack of primary care, I think, is dragging as well. I quickly wanted to just touch on the ambulance. You may have seen an Hanover Situate ambulance, if you have some questions about that.
I saw one yesterday.
So we've had one of our biggest, I didn't even list this as my challenge because this has evolved over the last few months, that the getting new ambulances is now two to ten years. And our, our, we would, we ordered an ambulance in the Fall Town meeting in 2022.
Yeah.
We appropriated money to order the ambulance. The order was placed two weeks later. That ambulance is not coming until May of 2025. In the meantime, the ambulance that was supposed to be replaced was condemned. That's Chief Cavalero from Hanover. That is me handing the doll. We now share that ambulance because I, I have the ability.
Being a kicking it up?
The house it. No. And so that's running as a backup for us right now. So you will see a lot of that in, you know, probably over the next few months. So long term, we'd like to keep two backups. And they have a much more aggressive replacement program. So they're, they're, and we're, we're, we were trying to do that by ordering the ambulance.
Yeah.
Two years ago. So we're now, we hope to see that at the end of May. But you will see that around and you'll see other towns right now are not trading their ambulances in. They're, they're keeping them in their fleet. Hingham's running five to support two. I, I hope to at least have one to support, to have one and then have that third available for storms, events, parades, things like that. So that's, that's to answer that question is I was trying to get the article. Hanover did a great magazine article, article about Hanover being part of Situate and now this, this partnership. But I wasn't able to do that, but I'll press that. I'll book that online.
So does it stay in their station?
If we have, it stays in Situate. Because that was the reason, he had no place to house it. So it was his fourth ambulance. So
So we're renting it for a dollar?
We're, yeah.
Good job.
I think, I mean, that's I, I, that'd be a little partnership, thank you to
Yeah, the timing was perfect because we, our 2012 freight line had over 230,000 on its cooldown. So we, we already traded that into the ambulance. We haven't been delivering on yet. But this, we're hoping this partnership will, will run for at least until the ambulance is ready to be acquired. It doesn't look good right now.
We're turning the full tank.
Yeah. There's you too. Under the numbers, we saw our, our biggest jump was, was very significant increase due to the collective bargaining agreements. And we're now, we were not competitive. We've lost some personnel to other communities. And I think with the two prong effort of making our pay competitive. And now with the recruiting going on with local, local talent, I think that's going to try to properly retain them and get more of a situation. Not to say that my staff, you know, like we don't have as many natives as we did when I first came on. But it's, we have a really good, we have an excellent committed staff right now. But it's nice to see hometown kids come in, I think, take over for us. The, so that, that's really the biggest jump. And, you know, if we did an 11% reduction, we'll, we'll deal with. We're trying to do more with service contracts because we seem to be financially, it's better for us. We're getting a lot of perks for that. Service reps are making sure we're getting updated batteries for all our, our ambulance equipment and things like that. So we're, that's pretty much it.
I'll log that up.
Okay.
I, I mean, yeah, it's pretty
Thoroughly impressed, always.
Look at that, you're skating with no No, it, I mean, yeah, I mean, the numbers are Yeah, it's a good bar and then a lot of the judges. Well, thank you for everything. I can't, thinking about that drone thing. No, seriously, I mean, all the
Could you just fly us over to his house a few times?
Please, I'm a cat.
Going to drop a little check.
Except the new burger place opens, yeah.
We gotta go to test room.
Yeah, yeah.
I might use.
Okay.
The only thing you need to mention, I mean, I just, the, the worst of the fire this weekend.
Oh, yeah.
Did you, did you know that you saw it happen?
It used to be the fire. Now what, which fire?
I know, but, and those buildings were all, they were around there, our whole
Yeah.
Loops.
Yeah, I, I, we were a little bit questioning on, on, I, I went up, I upgraded to the second alarm just because like it was, I didn't, we, we caught it, we caught it. And, yeah, we kind of dug some hole in there with that. So it was good. So we, yeah.
Did you have the accomplice, they were speaking?
Yeah, they were working, they were, yeah, they, they discovered it. And they, we did evacuate some of the surrounding, just in case things went, went south, but they didn't. So it worked out well. All right, thanks.
Five sixty beautifications, two kissing. Now, before both of you begin, come on up, come on up. I have to offer a follow up.
How late it is?
Well, that, the collater is also, I have a terrible liaison. I have missed so many meetings this week. I have, it's terrible. I also know that
About coming to our meetings.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
That's why we did for you.
This is, I admit, that's me, you're a wonderful man. You get to wean and it's all
Yes, and we're enjoying the meeting, because
Done.
I missed two meetings and that's why I'm here tonight, because I totally thought I'd be here. I think you have to be here.
I will be better.
He would just not jump that.
Thank you.
We're going to need your special pair of gloves. Excellent. So I'm going to call to follow the police and fire, we're sitting, I'm sitting back here, but oh, yeah, well, we're just looking for some little, little budget, we see little things go on. So, Mr. Gilmore, I haven't met you before. I don't think I knew.
No, I don't think so.
It's true, it was fun, I'm Casey. You're a Muslim.
Muslim, I know.
I hear good things about you guys, fun, valuable things.
We try.
This, I guess, edge of it.
They have this
Oh, she's on our new, she's on our
The whole committee is filled with some of the most passionate, strongest and
opinionated.
Bond, I love, it's fabulous.
Strong-willed.
We love them, right?
Yes.
Fabulous.
I do say that to people, like, how come we don't get to take it? Just do what they tell. Yeah, because you're doing such great work. So I am going to just give a little bit of an overview about the beautification and our key budget components. Talk about what each of those mean. We'll do a little bit of pie below with what we have accomplished in our challenges. And then we'll have Leslie doing her financial figure. She's the financial lady. So we have five major budget components. The first one is the, is maintaining the railroad crossings and the traffic islands throughout the town, which we hire a labor contractor to take care of. Yeah, because what we have for quite a lot of people is safety and whatnot. Shipshape Day in Little Situate, which is a huge part of what we do. And we'll drill top in a second. Merchant program, where we issue vouchers to merchants from Pomerock to North Situate. Adopt a lot, which are the gardens throughout the town that we have volunteers that maintain and weed and water and, excuse me, maintain. And then our last thing is special projects. So each year we try to come up with a new project to do something to help maintain or to unify certain parts of the town. All the way from Pomerock to North Situate. So the first thing is the traffic islands, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with. I do go to Hingham and Cohasset quite often. And I do have to say that I look nicer than theirs. And my husband says the same thing when he's traveling on train. So the railroad, let's see, what else do I want to say about that? We need to replace them quite frequently. There's been some issues with traffic and not being able to see over certain plants that have grown taller. So we've had to work on maintaining this a little bit more. We're trying to increase our use of native plants because none of them are watered. Like mother nature for that. So that's been a little difficult. And moving on to Shipshape Day, we had over 540 volunteers last year. It was great, competing with Get Free Bush and Little League. So we were pretty great in soccer, weather. So we were pretty grateful that we, and the weather, that we had that many people turn out. And I just heard today that we had over four tons of trash that was collected. So I thought, I don't know how they weighed that, but I thought that was pretty amazing.
Largest ever.
They may have been some, a lot of tires maybe that
Messing on you.
Along the tire side that I walk daily. And I, and we have done this now for 56 years, which is amazing. We are working on partnering more with Get Free Bush and the folks that have been involved in that because they, some of our new structured goings more coming. They're trying to kind of get us out there to see what we can to do to kind of help some of the businesses in the Free Bush area. We're constantly trying to educate our residents and families about invasive plant materials, public mustard that grows every single spring. And then trying to find ways again of educating families about the importance of native plants as well as other plants that help to keep away pesticides and all those other things. So moving on to our merchant program, we all know, we have about maybe 120 vouchers to various merchants that are pretty much within the drive, like the driving distance, I guess, the front street to the main street and from Millard Island Street to North Situate. And then the businesses in Pomerock. And we ended up having 70 people that use them. I, it was interesting. I helped hand out the vouchers this year. And I found that a lot of our new businesses just don't know, they don't use it, they don't know where RNC is. So I think we'd like to work a little bit more on trying to educate people as to how to do that and help them a little bit. Our merchant program and adopt a lots, we have, I'm not sure how many gardens, but we have 20 volunteers that maintain lots, things like we have an apple lot. We need to do yearly spring planting and mulching for all those gardens. And educating our caretakers about native, native plants and drugs and materials for the gardens. And obviously I was trying to increase our volunteers and finding ways to get people on our board, which is helpful. Really ideally, we have eight now, but ideally it'd be great to have 10. And representing various areas as well. As far as our special projects are concerned, this past year, we worked with the lighthouse attended and and redid the gardens around the backside of the lighthouse, but parking lot. And put some new planters in that look great. And we have our new Lily Garden at the Senior Center, the North Situate Train Campy. I personally have not been there, but apparently there's been a lot of work done there to make that a little bit more inviting. The Widow's Park Garden, which is like all over, over there. It's around the black hole and that's really come along. And I say it was over there this morning, although I got yelled at by my granddog. Not great yet. Sixty, but it looks great. It's, it's very easy to maintain and people are really enjoying it. And I put a lot of no buts, please, and I want the golfers to do a little bit better about not throwing their buts into the garden. So that's been a great project. Course Town Hall looks great tonight. Thanks to Leslie and the crew for setting up all the grating and the lights. Welcome everyone to today. And then last, yesterday, we put up the tree downtown in the gazebo and have the lights on, ready to go. So that'll be ready for this weekend's first trial. Uh, let's see, what else? Well, I don't need to go over accomplishments because that's pretty much all those things that I've just said. And I want to kind of finish this up for you guys. Didn't you help us? But I think all in terms of our challenges, it's always difficult working with the landscape company and making sure that everything is, you know, doing their job in the weeds and the mulch and the drought and making sure that mother nature kind of cooperates as well. And that's, that's kind of a challenge for us. The cost of the merchant plot program is always unpredictable. We don't know who's going to be using it. We, the climate changes have been helping kind of making things difficult. We've lost a lot of plant material over the years. And of course, with the flooding downtown at the Parkway, we never know what's going to come back the following year. And of course, with the flooding downtown at the Parkway, um, we never know what's going to come back the following year, but, you know. It's okay, the, the plants have been pretty resilient and, um.
I love the heart they have, they're very resilient.
Yeah, it looks gorgeous though, I don't know how you do it.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I, I was, I was actually down there yesterday, and I was pretty surprised that things are coming back, that even now, there's a little bit of color in there, and, uh, you know, that, the picnic tables are green and, um, with the, um, Arbor Master sun on the furniture down there, it's just a very inviting place. Something I did notice last night, and I don't, Leslie thought you might have a lighting committee or something, but there's no lights along Parkway. It's very dark at night, and I noticed that last year too, when the, um, when the families were doing the little horse trip, you know, trip, or whatever thing around the, um, parking lot, that the lights are very, um, very poor, the parking lot is probably better.
Did you go in the side by the water or just the hole?
Oh, it's bad. I just know, because I'm usually taking my kids at night, and it's like, we can't go across.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
And I actually thought it would be cool to do, um, solar lights in those bowls, because there's so much sun down there, but anyway, I just thought that was kind of interesting last night.
Yeah, but I never, never.
I know, that's what somebody said to me, if you're flying that out at night, well, you are, um, it's just.
It's dark.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, that's just kind of something to, um, for us to kind of think about a little bit. But that's pretty much it, you guys have the, kind of the spiel, I don't want to kind of repeat what we, um, have already said, but I know Leslie wants to talk a little bit about the budgets.
I'm not really, but no, um, I think Sue pretty much said everything, um, as far as the budget, um, it's been, we keep getting a little bit more every year, and we keep finding ways to spend it, and, um, understand it's a different year this year, and, uh, you know, we understand that. Um, but we, uh, we've just been able to use it, and we've done a lot of things, as far as for this current year, um, the shed that we put in behind Town Hall, uh, was around ten thousand all total with everything we've done, the shelving and all of that, and then it's about fifteen thousand, well, just over that, for the care of the railroad islands, um, so we're into probably about seven, backing into about seven thousand left to do whatever projects we're talking about, um, I helped maintain the railroad islands with Captain McCormick, and we need to redo some of the, um, they haven't planted in over a couple of years now, but, um, and anyway, we're, um, doing well, and we've got a great group of women, and we all divvied up, and we all, you know, there's somebody at the maritime, me at Town Hall, um, uh, you know, but just, we all are very busy, and we all work well together, and it's, um, and I've been on it, I don't even know, over ten years, maybe, I don't even know, but it's just a great group, we have a great group, and, uh, we enjoy everything we're doing. And we really appreciate all you've done for us, so, just try and be the best we can.
Yeah, I agree.
And we have fun, so.
Every dollar you give, it's like worth ten times, it's, it's amazing.
Yes, I agree.
I'm.
Beautiful.
I gotta ask everyone, let's find one person, all of a sudden, one other volunteer for this group, because more than anything.
Working volunteer.
Working volunteer.
Working, thank you.
No, check our trailer on the stickers. See if they have palaces, check their hands for palaces.
Yes.
Yeah. You had forgotten yours. You know.
But thank you, thankfully, I mean, I'm really.
That's smart. I agree. Jim, solar light facilities, solar, gee, solar lights, I, uh, you want those post-solar lights for?
Along the lot.
Along the lot, yeah.
But they're not that expensive, the two ones are expensive, but.
Well, the only thing with, like, you need ones that you would put around your house, but a.
Well, no, industrial, like a real, like a real lot, that, 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 okay, buddy.
You got good stuff.
Right, yeah.
I had to look down and have.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's not a, uh, we're, we're writing it on the list.
Solar is cheap.
Yeah.
So, when, when do you meet?
We meet monthly, um, the third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday, where?
At, uh, at the library.
Six o'clock, something like that?
Six forty, but. Would you like to come to our meeting, Mr. Gilmore?
No, no, we're trying to find, we have no problem with that, but trying to find people, and I want to be able to send them to you.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, yeah.
We're super fun.
Well, they are, it's, I've learned more over the years, seriously.
I think the more people you have, the more resources you have, because everybody's got different talents.
Well, then, there's plenty, yeah.
Nobody that shouldn't qualify, it's just get in there and find something for them to do that they like to do.
Exactly.
And, uh, I can't say, that I went down to Old Saver for Thanksgiving, because I go down there every year, and we look much better than you, more Old Saver.
I used to go there for years, my best friend was from there, I'm from Ohio, but I used to fly out there, that's, I love that area, beautiful.
So, I have the, um, Arbor Master area, and hopefully you guys took care of him tonight, so I think building would be really nice, but anyway, um, I tell you one thing, you go at six o'clock in the morning, you have everybody come by and compliment you on your garden, it's like. What, what a great way to start your day. Yeah, there are so many people that are visiting us from other places, it's amazing how many tours. That's, it's lovely, it's a lovely spot. So, anyway, but they have those, I, just from a resource standpoint, so, would you guys identify something that, like, the solar lights or, um, you know, something like that, I know it would be, the, I've got a felt recognition grant that will, um, support these sorts of things, so if you come in with an application, it's another way, we don't have to go look at plenty, and, you know, lights along the whole Parkway to me is a no-brainer for a PDC grant, because it will encourage people to be down at the harbor, and, um, you know, unless Nancy says otherwise, I would think it would qualify, and that's the kind of thing that is, you know, they, they're the one other committee also that gets a lot of money for those things, so you could be synergistic with that, and then as far as getting the word out on merchants, um, vouchers, I assume you're working with the chamber and all the other business groups, because they should be pushing that information out to their members, because they're the ones you're, you're offering us to, and they look good, because they can help. No, that's a very good point, yeah, so, putting those together.
True, that's great.
Very, very good point, yeah. All right, folks, what, I, I looked at that list of all these, uh, you can go license by license tonight with all the.
I'd like to look it up.
We'll say as printed in me.
Yeah.
I'd have to, I'd have to clerk read them all.
Thank you, thanks, folks.
Thank you, please.
We all did.
Thank you for telling us, yeah.
Bob, come on, I'm sorry, it's so late. Well, I'll be, I'll be quick, I'll be quick, we have many questions.
Ah, oh, good, um, as far as our bigger construction, it was actually, I think the lighthouse, which everyone didn't take Friday.
Wow, yes.
God, it's not stopped, uh, really, the town, everyone did, it was over five hundred people, long ride, twenty-two months, what we've got to relive, but, and we are getting a flagpole.
Yeah, what's the decision?
It's, uh, gonna be forty feet, and it will be on the ground, which is safer, and do, actually, you can do this after, so. And it's, it was, it broke off a couple of times, and who takes it, Bobby and I, a couple, you know, once at least, and I was there, so.
Would you publicly, um, give the fact, give the information about the history of that flagpole, and, and is it part of the original, and this is.
No, it's not, actually, Jim wrote something up about it, it's not originally.
I know this, but I want the public to be aware of it.
It's not like it's.
Didn't go up there until the nineteen, something.
The nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, so you're not denigrating the story of this.
So, no, we're not, no, it's, it's, it will be in a better place, and you can actually fly a bigger flag.
And.
So, yeah.
Put it up and down, that's.
Put it up and down, yes, so, um, that's it, I don't know if you've read this, I can be really quick, um, basically, it's almost the same as last year, one of the biggest bumps is actually the Vortica weekend now, which we don't have anything to do with, but it's in our budget, so that was a big, like, nine thousand dollars, I think. Gunworth is coming along, hopefully that will be opened in the spring, the Interpretive Museum, it's really looks great inside, not quite ready, but there's a lot of stuff that we had that we haven't been able to show, those will be showing there, I think everyone's gonna enjoy it. The Man, we've had, uh, well, we do tours five times a year, and then special events, we actually had a concert at The Man, yeah, concert that lost power. Um, Bates House is gonna be a problem, there's a lot of work that's gonna be done there, gonna work with CPC, Nancy, I think, Monday, meeting? Yeah, do you want me to go?
Okay.
Okay, hey, so, anyway, that's, any questions? Think, would be, right, it was probably great.
My lips are great.
Yeah, the write-up's fabulous, um. You see.
You're all good. I'm fine, are you fine with, uh, fifteen thousand dollars less in your request for, uh, for the repair maintenance?
Um, the budget, I think the budget that we put in is, is gonna work, um, we have people that rent that, the lighthouse, The Man, and the Bates House, and a lot of that goes towards repairs.
The kind of stuff.
Like, basically routine maintenance, so, I mean, of course, the lighthouse, that was a big project that we did, that was, CPC, mass cultural movement, like, lighthouse lovers gave us money, but other than that, I think we're moving along. I think that when people come to Situate, I think they are impressed with that new historical progress, it worked pretty good.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. That was quick, thank us, right?
Thank you, Bob, for having me.
Boy, you did such a great job.
Yeah.
You did a great job on the speech at the, uh, lighthouse, I really enjoyed that.
Yeah, that was good.
So, very nice.
Very.
For Bob Lee's work, we're gonna be putting on an RFP to look at the Bates House. We're gonna look at it as part of our facility study, and there's some substantial work that we can do down at the Bates House.
Yeah, structural, right?
Structural, so that RFP is already out.
RFP, I see.
And we've already gotten one response back on the question, so, uh, don't be surprised when you see that coming to CPC, but that's gonna be a big project.
Okay.
Where are we?
Yeah. Well.
So, I guess the process, if the nine thousand dollars for Morikaelenken goes through here?
It's historical properties.
Yep.
Budget, and that's, and one of the historical private properties, so that goes through the budget.
Through here to then pay for the Morikaelenken, like the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
The lights, the, the heat.
The lights, the heat.
That's the, the, uh, uh.
Alarm.
Electricity.
Alarm, okay.
And they, they all go up, so.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's so late.
That's okay.
But there's a lot of.
They, I mean, hopefully, it's good, you know.
I like a few minutes off schedule, pretty good, for budget season.
Yeah, I was equipped as well.
Yeah, give us back, all right, give him back some money, because he was.
Town, that town, who's one?
If you want, I'll yield to the lady in the audience, I'm not sure. It's from Dayton.
Oh, that's okay, you can watch.
If you're, we were gonna talk about it, right, I'm just here in case there was an odd question, but I wasn't expecting those to. It's the, um, Bailey Ellis House.
Oh.
I was waiting for it, I think.
Oh, I mean, yeah, we're gonna work that, Andrea.
We can do this, too, for, yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll invert that.
Yeah.
We'll invert, we'll go to Bailey Ellis first.
Okay. So, um.
Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you, folks.
Um, the Bailey Ellis House and the Situate Arts Association, thank you very much, um, issued an RFP for the work for their latest, um, community preservation project to restore that, um, property, it was one respondent, which was Buttonwood Renovations, and, um, this, um, entity has done other restoration projects there, and the, um, the contract will be seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and it will include, uh, work on the tower and painting of the tower.
The good for both of them.
The, um, the Buttonwood is very experienced in this, and I think you saw from the backup, the number of other properties that they, he has worked on.
We have, have we used Buttonwood before?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, it's.
He's done a lot of stuff for us, especially in Bailey Ellis.
It's John, right?
John, that one.
That one, he came, I'm not, he came to look at the Morikaelenken.
Love when people already know.
He knows the.
Properties that makes.
And they look a lot in all of them.
Yes.
A lot of them.
Yes.
And it's fun, it was.
It is, and, uh, I, I can't, uh, thank, uh, Situate Arts Association enough for all the work they do, getting grants and filing these applications. To bring this property back to life.
You know, there's, I feel we should have a question for you, okay? Is there anything you'd like to say about the, uh, association, or is the plug, I mean, you came all this way?
Um, you know what, I used to come in and sit in on these, I don't expect a question, but just in case there was one, I like to show up, or Janet likes to show up, but she's out of town. Um, this one, I think, I'm not sure, but we suspect the reason why we only had one respondent was because there will be scaffolding that needs to be built to get up to the tower, because that's at the top of the Bailey Ellis House, and the ground space with, where they have to start building, um, when we had people coming out to check, check it out, there's just not a lot of ground space that's flat, and you have to build your scaffolding from there to get up to the tower to do the work, and that's very, a lot of people, that was our impression, so, John DeWey, he's done work in test before, and he, as part of his, um, bid included, um, scaffolding, and he did speak with a scaffolding company, they know what they're up against, and so that's included in his, um.
Well, I know the answer, yeah, there's a lot to it, so this is gonna, this is gonna help, I'm, I'm gonna admit something, they'll mad me, I've never, I've never visited this.
You should go, uh, you should let us know, I would.
I know, I feel, I, because I feel terrible.
It's so embarrassing.
Yeah, we're.
We would love to watch it for any time.
Yeah.
Um, often, there's, you know, artists up there, so they could let you win if they happen to.
That's, yeah, where's the guy?
I'd love to walk up there and to let you check it out.
Yeah, because you've never been in it.
I've never been in it, but I've been on, on the, obviously, I can.
Well, you know, the most beautiful time to go is, um, the garden club does all the gardening, so in the spring, when all the flowers are going insane, it's just so beautiful driving up there.
Oh, we'll take them, I, this is, again, makes me remember the local paper, I didn't know about the garden club doing that, this, I missed, uh, I'm.
Oh, I know, they did beautiful work, I didn't know.
Yeah, what, motion, please.
Move to vote to award a contract to Buttonwood Renovations of Norwell, Massachusetts for seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the CPA project for the tower restoration at the Bailey Ellis House.
Second.
Move, uh, Gilmore second, but I just can't feel the votes in favor, bye. It's unanimous.
Thanks for saying what I've done, yeah, I appreciate you, me healing. So, do you want to do the other contract, or you want to go back to the budget?
What we're on, you have, what do you have in mind?
Um, contract.
Let's do it.
So, uh, a special town meeting approved eighty-seven thousand dollars, so the, uh, what else, golf course could purchase ten additional golf carts.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, Ian can put on, right on to that, and we have for you a proposal to buy ten new golf carts, and he is trading in, um, ten carts, and Jim and I spoke to him a little time, you know, get the fleet bigger, but the ten he's trading in are non-functioning carts, so we are absolutely, probably, we just, which is functioning carts.
He did not wait, I love that.
Yeah.
All right, questions, I mean, this is, uh, it's already approved, it's been through, paid in.
It's a state contract.
It's a state contract, there's no motion.
Move to vote to award a contract to C2 Vehicles for the purchase of ten new Tempo model club car golf carts for seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, and time is second.
Mr. Gilmore, I gotta buy, Ms.
Second.
Can't deal, votes in favor, ah, unanimous. All right, now, let's talk about.
Just like the unanimous, we're not gonna get them flexed, so, um, well, all I can think of when I think of my budget is that whole starting in life, um, scared when they say, you know, I pick things up and I put them down, we add things up and we file away, uh, so, I'm not gonna belabor the point. We have a department, it's, uh, we're one of the departments that is foregoing, filling an open, a full-time position that has been vacant for a while, so, we're, like, doing that, um, I, all I want to spend my time on is there's a little change in the budget. I, all I wanna spend my time on is there's a little change in the budget, it's mostly reductions. And payroll is, and possibly the increases in the steps. I just wanna call out the fine work of HR Director Bob Clark, we all know, but he is a workhorse, he does so much. And very reliant on him and I want to call out all the hard work involved, the things that he does every day at Albert Hurley. And also the Assistant Accountant Mary is in the room, it's she and I are the account and charting. So we kind of absorb the work of the other position and just split it amongst ourselves, we have a long-term co-lead in that office, so duties that she had to. So it's just worked out that way, so it's working out really well for us. So that's my budget and that's all. And we got the PAC this year.
Can we go first?
The PAC. Oh, come on, it's afternoon time.
And the most important question is, you snap, little artist bucket, right?
I snapped one from my pocket, so it's all in my, no matter what happens.
Questions?
I have that question.
Thank you for, thank you for, thank you for being in your department for working the courage you do in search. That you can help in the tough budget time.
Award, award, wedding department, all the whole award.
Half a year.
So you get an award for running in a major position.
If you put in, I didn't have to say, in the accomplishments, do you think they approved financial policies?
Well, that happened after that.
That was after.
That's a major accomplishment.
Yeah, but to think there are challenges.
All right, new business. You have to open up annual and special time meeting warrants for April fourteenth, March twenty-five.
Unbelievable.
Motion. We're just opening it up.
Just opening it, closing the next meeting.
So move.
And it's the same one, are we gonna talk about the list after?
Yeah, we're just opening it up.
Yeah, we have this one, we're looking for awards for the annual and special time meetings on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Can't feel seconded by Ms. Harrison, all those in favor, ah, it's unanimous.
And the list is just my working list, it isn't.
Oh, yeah, I wanna make sure we get that each one. The working.
Yeah.
All right, license renewals. There is a way to do these, there's not a way to do these.
I don't think you, I think you have to read each motion with the names.
Ah, I have Haze for four, but I will not make our last word.
Usually we like, we go around Rob at that point, we really have to read all of them.
Where's the, like, I mean, you could do them as a group, right?
Move through.
Move through, following in holder bed and breakfast licenses, we could.
Yeah, the two, that's what I mean, correct. So you don't have to say move to approve each one, you just move to approve the in at Situate Harbor, the following in and bed holder breakfast licenses for twenty twenty-five, the in at Situate Harbor, Joanne DiNatali, three forty-nine Hathaway Road, DBA Pearl.
So we do need to read it.
You need to, you need, as a group, you don't have to say, I move, I move, I move for each one, you know what I'm saying?
He could, we, he can further move. And if you want, do it all at once.
Oh, yeah, do it all.
All right, let's do that, here we go. Just go, just go, and to do that, then just do further move and rethrow it.
You ready to go?
Go, wait, but you need to, you need to see what the license is, you need to make sure you stay with the license.
The holder license and then further move.
That's such a great.
Bed and breakfast licenses for.
That's such a great.
Yeah, this will, this will cause me to become rather parched.
Oh, I agree.
There you go, here we go, anything. Move that the select board vote to renew the following in holders slash bed and breakfast licenses for twenty twenty-five. The in at Situate Harbor, Joanne DiNatali, three forty-nine Hathaway Road, DBA The Pearl. Further, that the select board vote to renew the following retail package store, all alcoholic beverage licenses for twenty twenty-five. That's a tough word to pronounce. La, La Maya?
La Maya.
La Maya Liquors, DBA Green Bush Package Store Inc., Tishon Inc., DBA Situate Package Store Inc., Board one forty-three LLC, Lighthouse Enterprises Inc., DBA Harborside Wines and Spirits. Further move that the select board vote to renew the following retail package store wine and malt beverage licenses for twenty twenty-five. Jack Mena, DBA Seven Eleven, New Harbor Corp., DBA Driftway General Store, Maladies Fish Market Corp., H and A Brothers, DBA Sand Hill General, General Store, MFJ Market Inc., DBA The Village Market. Further move that the select board vote to renew the following restaurant wine and malt beverage licenses for twenty twenty-five. Cosmos Cafe LLC. Further move that the select board vote to renew the following restaurant, all alcoholic beverage licenses for twenty twenty-five. CP's Woodfire Pizza, Front Street Situate LLC, DBA Chopsticks and Forks. Grateful Haven Inc., DBA Riverside. Green Eye Lady Inc., DBA Galley, Hybert, Hybertian Tavern Inc., Nana Enterprises LLC, DBA The River Club, O'Callaghan's LLC, DBA The Voyage, Salt Society Inc., DBA Salt Society, Situate Tavern Inc., DBA Situate Tavern, Legacy Management, DBA Millworth Restaurant, McClosky, McClosky Inc., DBA TK O'Malley Sports Cafe, O'Mansit Inc., DBA The Oysterman, The Vine Bar LLC, DBA The Vine Bar, The Drift Inn Inc., DBA The Drift Inn. Further move that the select board vote to renew the following general on-premise all alcoholic beverage licenses for twenty twenty-five. The Real Harbor Theater LLC, Wedgewood Beverages Inc., DBA The Barker House by Wedgewood Wedding.
I'll, I can't make you fall, and someone's got.
Go ahead.
So, move by Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Ms.
Somebody.
Second.
Harrison, all those in favor, aye, say aye. Paul, that's real, you have to.
You're in her club and all alcohol.
For the, the alcohol.
So I have to recuse, sorry.
Wait, you have to recuse for what?
The alcohol.
All right, so.
Wait, how's that, how's that?
We have to.
You're going to be there.
Oh, okay.
You're at that, you're at that point right now.
And then could we just renew Riverside's license?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we have to.
They have to renew them, but, okay, just for those at home, but.
We have to, but it's really, you've already approved a transfer to the Casa Berry.
Right, we already approved the transfer.
Yeah, but it's not open yet, so it's not open because Casa Berry isn't open, the Riverside license has to be.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Wait, when, how do I go to, to where's?
Move, I could do.
No, 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 I'm just, oh, it's the next, I'll do it, I'll do it. Uh, move to per general on-premise all alcohol beverage licenses to the Real Harbor Theater LLC and Wedgewood Beverages.
Very good.
Oh, you did that one? Oh, move to approve club all alcohol beverage licenses, Situate Post three one six nine, the VFW INC., Situate Harbor Yacht Club, Situate Country Club and Hathaway Golf Club Incorporated.
All right, so hold on, so.
Then we need to do a second, because you have to recuse yourself, right?
Yeah, so seconded by, so move by Ms. Harrison, Mr. Gilmore, all those in favor, aye. Oh, wait a minute, we don't have.
Three ayes.
You did, when she recuses herself.
Yes, three ayes, and we're still staying.
Three ayes, and we're still staying, we're good.
Yeah, you're still there.
Okay. Sorry, keep going.
Okay, and so then we do a new one now, because it should speak him, so. Move to approve club of wine and malt beverage licenses, including Situate Bracket and Fitness Incorporated. Further move to approve Palmer Series pouring permit for malt licenses to Untold Brewing LLC. Further move to approve common vicular licenses for Board one four three LLC, CDW Enterprises, DBA Coffee Corner, China Gourmet, Cersei's Brado, Cosmos Cafe LLC, CP's Woodfire Pizza, Front Street LLC, DBA Chopsticks and Forks, Crust, three sixty-seven Gannett LLC, DBA Dribbles, Gannett Road, RCSJR DBA Dribbles, Work Street, New Harbor Corp., DBA Driftway General Store, Gateway Donut LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts thirty-two new Driftway, Green Eye Lady Incorporated, DBA Galley, H and A Brothers, DBA Sand Hills General Store, Hathaway Golf Club Incorporated, Tennessee News, Hybertian Tavern, Jaminica DBA Seven Eleven, Lah, Lahimio Liquors, DBA Green Bush Package Store, Lucky Finn Cafe LLC, DBA Lucky Finn, two oh six Front Street, Lucky Finn Cafe LLC, DBA Lucky Finn, forty-eight fifty-three Driftway, Legacy Management, DBA Millmore Restaurant, Kirchen Incorporated, DBA Situate Package Store, McClosky Incorporated, DBA TK O'Malley Sports Cafe, MFJ Market Incorporated, DBA The Village Market, Mike's Situate Harbor Incorporated, DBA Sand on the Harbor, Hermanos Pizzeria, Malaney's Fish Market Corp., Nonas Homemade, Situate Tavern Incorporated, DBA Situate Tavern, SAI Convenience Corp., DBA Dad's Place, SAI Convenience Corp., DBA Ronnie Jones General Store, Situate Bagel Incorporated, DBA Dunker Tooties, O'Callaghan LLC, DBA The Voyage, Nana Enterprises, DBA River Club, Salt Society, Situate Country Club Incorporated, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, Superior Lobster LLC, The Drift Inn Incorporated, The In at Situate Harbor, O'Mansit Incorporated, DBA The Oysterman, Joanne DiNatali, three forty-nine Hathaway Road, DBA The Pearl, The Real Harbor Theater LLC, The Vine Bar LLC, Untold Brewing LLC, Situate Post three one six nine, the VFW Incorporated, Wedgewood Beverages, DBA The Barker House by Wedgewood Weddings, XR Foods LLC, DBA Crossroads Sandwiches. Further move entertainment licenses, CP Woodfire Pizza, Green Eye Lady Incorporated, DBA Galley, Hathaway Golf Club Incorporated, Tibernian Tavern, Lucky Finn Cafe LLC, DBA Lucky Finn, two oh six Front Street, Legacy Management, DBA Millmore Restaurant, Malaney's Fish Market, O'Callaghan LLC, DBA The Voyage, Nana's Express, DBA River Club, Salt Society, Situate Country Club Incorporated, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, McClosky Incorporated, DBA TK O'Malley's, Untold Brewing LLC, Situate Post three one six nine, the VFW Incorporated, The Drift Inn Incorporated, DBA The Drift Inn, Wedgewood Beverages Incorporated, DBA The Barker House by Wedgewood Weddings, O'Mansit Incorporated, The Oysterman, The Vine LLC. Further move, accepted licenses to Alltown Incorporated, PF Spencer Junior Incorporated, Resonant Data Sanitary Pumping Incorporated, Sora's Sanitation Pumping Incorporated. Further move bowling licenses to Situate Bowlway, move and further move movie theater licenses to The Real Harbor Theater LLC. Further move class two licenses to Alphard, Cole DBA, Seacrest Auto, McBrian Diagnostic Repair, Situate Shell Incorporated, and further move class three licenses to Ryan Allen LLC, Christopher Litchfield, DBA Graves Repair Shop. The end.
Very good, both of you, thank you, well done, that's a lot. Moved by Ms. Harrison, seconded by Mr. Gilmore, now there's gonna be accusations in the entertainment license and the common vet for Hathaway Golf Club and the.
Harvey Outlet.
The Harbor Yacht Club, Situate. All those in favor?
So I can, I can vote in favor abstaining from those two licenses in both those categories.
Yeah, both, she is gonna abstain in those establishments. Mr. Patience.
Yes.
Hathaway and Situate Harbor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, all those in favor?
Aye. With those, with the, down the ranks.
Effemens, those categories.
All right.
I'm gonna take it, I'm right.
Whatever. Liaison reports.
Well, like, for anybody who's worried for, like, I'm loving from the sister city and I just remind you again, SDEI language, you gotta get that decided. Get it on the agenda.
What else do you have?
What do I have? Well, the, I missed the wow, but there was a donation for that.
Yeah.
That'll be coming in the next week through Surplus, the next meeting. Beach, I did meet with the, I had a party with the DBW and Jim and our beach commission and they will be coming with some recommendation and then also a recommendation and discussion of fees. Waterways is tomorrow, and that's, and Shoffish will be coming in January for a report out on agriculture.
Got it.
And I really hope Marshall passes.
Yes.
Their, their.
MBTA.
MBTA, because that dredging project, we can't pay that. And that will be closed in probably two years.
Purification was in. Our resources, meeting gets soon, part of that, sign all this up for the seaside plunge.
Joe, have you ever done it?
Yes.
I've done it like three years or two years, all the points.
I think you're somewhere.
Yeah.
You look, you look way down the towel, I'm trying to do the pitch for.
One year it was pretty warm, one year it was deadly cold.
That's the earth. I did a little warm year.
I did not do it one more.
So Jim was here, I said it. I got our liaisons all of course.
I have a trip, I have nothing on my face, but I did wanna, with Jim's back in the room, we, I'm thinking an inquiry that was if things go well with our Situate sailors on Thursday.
Right.
Some of the families are like, can we maybe do a parade during the first Friday or the whole, you know, the weekend celebration? And I said, well, somebody's gonna have to come up with a plan, they're gonna have to come up with us a plan. It's like, they would have a date to turn around.
Like, we need to pack them all the same.
And then the last time they won, they sent a police escort down with the PAC early enough to them.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you a little heads up.
All stuff, she, do you have any death notes? And they did ride it, they did ride Sean Garry Shane, it was great.
Yeah, I'm thinking Saturday after Santa comes and all that stuff and people are down there, jeez.
Well, they gotta win first.
Plus, yeah, actually, why you're there, that's why nobody wants to plan it, because they don't want these super stuff.
Never know.
So I just giving you all the odds up that that might come up suddenly on Friday.
Four responded.
One of the ones you have another in from Xfinity saying their services, they love us all, they love to serve our customers and their prices are going up and they will be duly noted in the new Jake style bill where all service charges that they can be included. That's paraphrasing, and then secondly, another Xfinity note, again about price adjustments, pricing updates. And then there's their, it looks very, very nice chart, we need to read. Um, so that, and then I think there's one other, I just couldn't get through all these charts. Everybody's chart get confused. Uh, and then from Xfinity, third notice to municipal building emergency trouble reporting procedures. So I hope that goes to the right people about what happens when building, okay, now let me read these. We are writing, gonna share with you the emergency trouble recording procedure in the event a municipal building experiences problems with downed cable drops, signal transport issues, with INET or video return lines, public education and government BEG access channels, or to have our technical or construction staff on site during an emergency. And here are, for downlines, there's steps and phone numbers to call, what to say, and for INET and BEG, same.
And here are, for downlines, there's steps and phone numbers to call, what to say, and for INET and BEG, same thing, where to call. Select option five and you'll get a person, so I hope this goes to the right folks. That's all I have for correspondence today, very fine day.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
There's no minute.
There's no minute, no minute.
I couldn't get a minute, so.
Oh, sorry, um.
Move to Joe Turner and Sally Ducky.
You're, I'm, yeah, also by, take us all those in favor. Aye, unanimous.